Wear your socks all black too? Your socks please.
I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. May I please have a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg, James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Can I have a second, please? Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Zonby.
Aye.
Ms. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Motion passes and closed session is certified. Ms. Sosa, will you call attendance, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Ms. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Zonby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
I am here. I have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Sir, aye.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Zonby.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to 4.01 announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Good evening, Madam Chair. I have the pleasure of sharing several school and student accomplishments with you this evening. To begin, congratulations go out to J. Blaine Blatton Elementary School for being named a 2018 Purple Star School by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact for Military Children. The school was recognized for its ongoing efforts to provide resources, programs, and support on issues that are important to military-connected children such as deployments, transitions, and academic planning. Their work will be featured in greater detail during the school spotlight portion of the next school board meeting. Speaking of spotlights, Lafayette High School senior will step into the national spotlight on Thanksgiving Day. Haley Jupe Rubenstein will perform as part of the Macy's Great American Marching Band during the annual Thanksgiving Day Parade. Haley is currently a drum major at Lafayette High, but she will be playing the piccolo on Thanksgiving Day. While there, she will be cheered on by nearly three million people lining the New York City Parade route, and approximately fifty million people will be watching the parade at home, and I certainly will be one of those people. You can see Haley in action by turning into the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade on NBC. While we're on the subject of Thanksgiving, I'd like to remind our families that WJCC schools will be closed Wednesday, November 21st through Friday, November 23rd, in observance of the holiday. And finally, I have a short video to share with you tonight. Recently, a group of female students representing each of our high schools attended a STEM's Girls' Night at the NASA Goddard Space Flight Center in Maryland. The goal was to expose students to the real-world applications of science, technology, engineering, and math in the nation's space program. Students had the chance to meet engineers, researchers, and even an astronaut. Our partners at NASA put together a short video of the event. Let's take a look.
What did you want to move in? I do not. Packaging engineering and industrial design. That's very exciting. So I decided to move in.
We invited over girls. An immersive and intense exposure to STEM. I'm really interested in reaching out to those girls who've pretty much given up on their ability to be able to use STEM. So I wasn't looking for the A and B students. I was looking for students who maybe struggled a little bit in the sciences and in math and engineering, those types of concepts, so that we could kind of show them what STEM really is like, the day in the life of an engineer.
We had an announcement come on in my school. One of the few classes that actually listened to the announcement. Yeah, so it was, I thought it was really cool. Maybe opportunity.
I really liked when we talked about the ways that different NASA technologies are integrated into real-world operations, like different ways that, I didn't know that NASA could be about any different things, and I know that it's actually in our life.
The encouragement of young women in STEM is important to me. I was encouraged, you know, many steps along the way in my career, and so any part I can play in that for other people is important to me.
So Rose Paddock is our mechanical engineer. Let's see, he's new.
I thought, like, before, when I was coming here, I didn't really think that, like, women in STEM was such a big issue, you know? Like, I knew that, yes, the movement is happening, it's becoming more equal, and, but I didn't know that it was like, like, it was such a big thing, you know? I don't think I really understood the experience of it.
As you can see, this was a once-in-the-lifetime experience for our students. As I said earlier, it was made possible through the division's partnership with NASA Goddard. As you know, creating opportunities for our community to engage with students is a strategy of Goal Three in our strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence. We appreciate our partners at NASA's Goddard Space Flight Center for their support and their desire to shine a light on STEM careers, which are often dominated by males in the industry. We hope this experience will encourage some of the female participants to consider a STEM-related career. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Anyone else have any announcements?
Yes, I recently attended the SEAC meeting, and we had a wonderful speaker, Dr. Hartley Huber from William &amp; Mary, and the focus this year in the SEAC committee is inclusion. And she talked about the trends in inclusion today and outcomes. There is a Facebook page, WJCC Special Education Advisory Committee, if you are interested in more information, and the December meeting has not been determined yet, but that is on the docket to be decided. So, of course, December's a crazy month anyway, so I think that's going to play into it. But, anyway, they're busy, and if you are interested, please come and attend those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm, as the Chair of the HARETTA Advisory Committee, we had our first meeting October 3rd down at WHRO. Dr. James Lane, who was the new State Superintendent of Public Instruction, was there to give us his thoughts about his vision for public education in the future. Nancy Rodriguez, who's the Deputy Director for 2019 American Evolution, briefed on the 2019 Schools Program that is designed to engage Virginia students, educators, and staff, dealing with themes of the Jamestown Commemoration, democracy, diversity, and opportunity. And the program launched on Constitution Day, and it closes in April of 2019. And entertaining greenbeats music video I was able to see at the recent WHRO Board of Directors Meeting. If you haven't seen anything like this from the Baton Environment Education Initiative, it's really, it's worth a laugh and, but a serious look, because it is a hoot. Just go to the WHRO website, and they're going to make about twelve more of those, but this one happened to be entitled Scoop the Poop. And it's a very entertaining animated video designed for students to help them recognize how important it is to pick after, pick up after your dog. And, of course, there was more discussion about how to expand the whole definition of poop, so it could apply for some other things as well. Our next meeting of the EAC is December 5th. Only one other thing is, as most of you probably know, the schools in our regional district, the districts in our region, basically own WHRO, started WHRO many, many, many years ago. And every HARETTA school will be given a plaque to install outside the principal's office and administrative offices that says, quote, "This is a school, this school is a proud owner of WHRO Public Meeting" to help get the message out to teachers, parents, and school bodies. A lot of people don't realize that. And they provide, as we heard at a recent board meeting, they provide an incredible variety of educational opportunities for our students. And actually, across the country, WHRO really is considered the number-one education PBS station. So...
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Anyone else?
I just want to invite the Williamsburg community to come out to the Williamsburg Holiday Parade on Saturday, December 1st. If you want to see your favorite mascot on parade, we have all sixteen mascots that will be participating in marching in the parade with the WJCC Foundation, which is the organization that provides the innovative teaching grants to our schools. So, just, it'll be Saturday morning, and come out and be on the lookout for your favorite mascot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. That brings us to 5.01 citizens' comments. I believe we have four cards this evening. Ms. Hummel, would you read the rules, please?
Now is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The Board is interested in hearing all comments fully, and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the Board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening, and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you. Zonby?
Sandra Curran?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for your time. I'm here representing the student athletes and the parents of those student athletes of War Hill High School, who are concerned about the auxiliary and support service space and the planning for that space in the proposed capital plan. There are large decisions that are proposed, and we're concerned as to the impact and implications of those decisions. First off, they're adding twelve classrooms to our school. That's potentially three hundred additional students, if you count twenty-five students per classroom. Conservative assumption would only be about a hundred and fifty new students, but that's fifty new students per lunch. Our school already has one thousand three hundred and seventy-two students. That's four hundred and fifty-seven students per lunch. Plus, adding fifty additional students to each lunchtime would put them at the fire code capacity, which was the reason they couldn't sell more than five hundred homecoming tickets a few weeks ago. You can't add any more lunchtimes either. We already have three lunchtimes at War Hill. They start at ten fifty and they end at one twenty. School ends at two twenty. So how would additional lunch space be addressed is a concern. And what about teachers for those classrooms? I've been told that we're already down one math teacher at War Hill High School. Does the future budget allow for the addition of twelve additional teachers for those twelve additional classrooms? And what about the ancillary teaching space, like auxiliary gym space, which further supports the need for an auxiliary gym at War Hill? Adding potentially a hundred and fifty to three hundred students would push the school to a five-A status, and we don't have the infrastructure to support that at this time. For example, our cheerleading team recently had to be bused to Yorktown to practice for their regionals, because the only gym War Hill has was being used for volleyball makeup games. Some of the school board members received an email a few weeks ago from a concerned parent about early practice times, practices that are starting at 6:00 a.m. and sometimes not ending, sometimes until 9:00 p.m. And sometimes they're having to practice twice daily as they compete for space in the weight room and the gym. Just recently, our boys' basketball team has already had to practice eight days off of school grounds. Our winter season just started November 5th, and that's eight practices already that they've had to find community gym space for. If we continue to ignore the auxiliary gym issue, what's going to happen is far more costly than the capital improvement plan. Less and less students will participate in sports, because half of them can't drive yet, and we're making it too hard for their parents to support them by having them practice at all hours of the day and night.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. If you'd like to leave the remainder of your remarks with the...
I would love to, but it's a mess, because I have notes all over it.
Would you mind emailing them to us?
I would be very happy to do that. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jennifer Beckham-Mendez?
Good evening, members of the school board. Dr. Heron, I'm a parent of a recent Lafayette High School grad and a current senior at Lafayette, who is in the video, so I was very excited to see her. Probably heard me over there. But I'm here today to call attention to an issue that is of concern to those of us who are members of the village and also parents at Lafayette High School. The continuing disparities that exist across the high schools. In part, these stem from disproportionate numbers of affluent families concentrated at one high school and the current enrollment-based funding structure. Because of this higher concentration of economically advantaged families, there are consistently more AP courses that are offered at Jamestown High School. According to the school board's own numbers, in 2016 and 17, there were twenty-two AP courses offered at Jamestown, and only seventeen and fifteen courses offered at Lafayette High School and War Hill, respectively. In 1718, the numbers, the proportions were about the same, nineteen AP courses offered at Jamestown, and only thirteen and fourteen courses offered at Lafayette and War Hill, respectively. Currently, the policy is that if there are fewer than fifteen students who sign up for a particular AP course, then students who wish to take that course, if it's not offered, because there are fewer than fifteen students, they must travel to another school for two blocks of the school day. The burden, then, of traveling to another school falls disproportionately on Lafayette High School and War Hill High School students, since those schools, especially in the case of Lafayette, have consistently lower enrollments and fewer students who sign up for these classes. Meanwhile, Jamestown High School can draw on a greater pool of students whose families have the resources and knowledge to guide them and to guide their students to these courses to achieve college readiness. The burden of being bused to another school also has a differential impact on governor's school students, who spend half the day at other locations already. They're going to Hampton, like my daughter. What student wants to spend an entire semester away from the school where they have built relationships and connections with teachers and other students, yet this is the option that governor's school students face if they want to take an AP course not offered at their high school? Notably, there are consistently fewer governor's school students at Lafayette High School than Jamestown, which is just another factor that impacts the demand for these courses. So those students are faced with the tough reality, they didn't sign up for gov school with the understanding that it would mean less, that they would have trouble getting into AP courses. If the school board does nothing, there is no reason to expect this trend to change. The school board is charged with acting in the interest of all students and families at WJCC, not just the parents at Jamestown, and they need to work to accommodate the needs of all students, as citizens and community members, families at Lafayette High School and War Hill deserve equitable advanced course offerings and levels of funding. We are all members of the same community, and we all pay taxes. The disparity in advanced placement course offerings needs to be addressed, not ignored, to ensure that students at high schools have the same opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Beckham-Mendez.
Kayla Aaron?
My name is Kayla Aaron. I'm a senior at the College of William &amp; Mary and a research intern with the village. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've spent this semester conducting research for the village's report on equity in the WJCC schools, under the supervision of a faculty member. I'm pleased to be here tonight to share some of our findings, along with some other village members. One major concern that arose from our research is the gaps in gifted and talented program enrollment across schools. Unfortunately, only the 2015-2016 school year data is available, but we're actively seeking the data from the past two years to contribute to these findings. In 2015, Black and Hispanic students were underrepresented in gifted enrollment in nine of the fifteen WJCC schools. Of these nine schools, two schools stand out. At Lafayette High School, Black and Hispanic students accounted for thirty-four point four percent of the overall population, but only fourteen point three percent of the gifted and talented program enrollment. More notably, at Norwich Elementary, no Black and Hispanic students were enrolled in gifted and talented programs in 2015. These findings suggest that we need to think carefully about short- and long-term strategies to close this gap. In the short term, we need to look at selection criteria and analyze the biases that exist in the process. Children from different backgrounds require different strategies to be identified as gifted and talented. In the long term, we need to work to continue to hire minority teachers. The broader literature says that minority teachers have higher expectations for minority students and are more likely to identify minority students as gifted and talented. These are crucial steps to begin to address this gap in gifted and talented program enrollment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Aaron.
Amy Quirk?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Amy Quirk. I'm a professor at William &amp; Mary, I'm a member of the village, and I'm the parent, proud parent, of a kindergartner at Matthew Whaley Elementary. So tonight, I also wanted to draw your attention to some of the findings from the report on equity in WJCC schools that we circulated to you all yesterday. Particularly, I wanted to speak to what we see as some pretty stark academic opportunity gap in the school system, based on analysis of the Virginia Department of Education data. Nearly every WJCC school demonstrated a significant and consistent gap in SOL pass scores between white and minority students since 2012. In the 2017-2018 school year alone, all but one elementary school had double-digit gaps in SOL pass rates between white and Black students in three or four subjects. Some of these schools at the elementary level had thirty-point gaps between Black and white students and between white and Hispanic students. As a parent with a child at Matthew Whaley, I was particularly shocked to see that there's a forty-point gap in reading and math SOL pass rates between white students compared to Black and Hispanic students. When we move to the middle school level, we see the same thing across all of the middle schools, double-digit gaps in SOL pass rates between Black and white students in four or five subjects. We do see some differences across schools. So the gaps at Berkeley were more severe than at the other middle schools, with twenty-three to thirty-four point gaps in pass rates. Again, at the high school, all of the high schools showed double-digit gaps in SOL pass rates between white and minority students across four to five subjects. Again, differences across schools. So the gaps at Lafayette High School were more severe than those at Jamestown and War Hill. So I think that all of this points to the fact that we need to take equity very seriously and urgently in the school district. And one of the key policy tools to do this, of course, is to put greater emphasis on needs-based funding. If we're going to close these opportunity gaps, it requires funding based on student need, not simply based on student numbers or student enrollment. More resources must be dedicated to closing these opportunity gaps within the schools. Each school needs to target resources based on need to ensure all students have the opportunities they need to succeed. But we also have to think about the allocation of resources across schools. This also has to be done based on need. Currently, school funding is based, of course, on numbers of students, and yet students who need more resources to succeed are concentrated disproportionately at certain schools, at Lafayette versus Jamestown, for example, and prior to redistricting at Berkeley versus the other middle schools. And this is one reason why we see more severe gaps in these schools.
Thank you, Ms. Quirk. If you'd like to email your remarks, that's...
I'm summarizing the report.
Yeah, okay. That brings us to school board evaluation tool discussion. What we have is, sorry, just a second, the VSBA version of sort of school board self-reflection, and I'm going to toss it to Ms. Hummel, who's agreed to lead this process for us.
Okay, so, sorry. Everyone has the one-pager. So it's just a matter of whether you guys want to go ahead with this VSBA version, which if we do, it's a simple self-reflection tool. I looked, because I thought in the past, we had a more in-depth version of school board evaluation, so I looked back, and in 2016, we did one that also did kind of a self-assessment, like, how are you performing as a school board member, and then also an assessment of the chair. So I didn't know whether we are, as a board, okay with this version, or if you want to go with a more in-depth version. So I just kind of want to get a feel for all of, from the board, one way or the other. Do you have any feeling?
Well, I've always supported in-depth evaluation.
Need any...
What did we do last year?
I just...
I'm trying to remember. What did we do?
We did the VSBA last year.
Did we do this?
Yeah, the VSBA, yeah.
I'm good with doing what we did last year.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Beers, or Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly.
Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with using the VSBA evaluation. It's very straightforward.
Okay. Ms. Young, do you have any feelings?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at, I was reading it earlier, and, I mean, when you're talking about in-depth evaluations, I mean, what would that involve? I mean, you're looking at these different elements that we're supposed to evaluate ourselves on, and if, I mean, if this is a self-reflection thing, I think this is fine. If we want to really spend more time on a deeper evaluation, then that would, we'd have to find an instrument, or else we'd have to create one. And I don't know that this board has that kind of time, so...
And I, when I think there's also an opportunity of, you know, sort of a deeper dive, like Dr. Beers suggests, is something that the board wants to do, there's always, there's also another vehicle for that, and that would be, you know, a retreat as well. So there's an opportunity to use...
So there's an opportunity to use this self-reflection tool now, per our standard operating procedure, and then, you know, contemplate something deeper, you know, maybe in partnership with the VSBA, if that's something that the board wants to do.
So it looks like general consensus is go with the VSBA version. And then, my second question to you is, do you want me to put this, do you want me to put this in a survey format that everyone can fill out online? Or do you want to just, want me to, do you guys want to print out this survey and just fill it out? And then I can collect it and take all the results? And do you have any preference on that?
No.
No, really. I like the online version, but I can work either way.
The benefit of the online version is that it can be completely anonymous, in that I would send you a link, and then all I would know is, okay, we're still missing one, or somebody still hasn't turned in, you know, that's all the level I would know. And then it would be in an Excel, I can just put it in a report format easily for everyone.
Sorry. These 10 items here, are those those 10 that they list at the beginning of their document about school boards? Those 10 things?
Are you talking about the code of ethics?
No, the, no, no, the, I forget where I've seen it, but they, in, the organization itself, in some introductory statement, indicates what are the things that a school board should do. And I think they're pretty much, I guess, the, I mean, you guys, I'll go, you know, I'll go anyway. You know, it's like, who is "we"? "We"? It's like, it's, I can't speak for the whole group. "We"? I'd rather have a more individually oriented, because I think it's important. What is your role? What am I doing? And you can, you know, you can gloss over all that stuff with just "we", and say, well, I can say, geez, I don't even know. So I, I think this is pretty superficial. It's my opinion, and as the Russians say, I may disagree with it later on.
My two cents are, Julie, I think whatever is easier for you, since you're going to be pulling together all of our responses, so if it's easier for you to do it online, I'm fine either way. And I like the idea of a deeper dive possibly for a spring retreat. So, Dr. Beers, if that's something that you would like us to reflect on more thoroughly, we could certainly do that in the spring, in a retreat form.
And maybe, Julie, if you do electronically, you see, maybe there's an opportunity after each question to provide a free response, you know, so that...
Well, there's definitely, there's some that want you to actually give an example.
Blast to.
Provide an example. No, I mean, like on...
Right, the question, yeah.
Six and seven.
I think it's six and seven. The rest would be more gut read. I read it as a, it's just taking a temperature.
A gut check, yeah.
A gut check. And then, I do say, think that, based on the response, if there are some certain points where we disagree about one or another of our points on here, that would be good, something good to deal with in a retreat.
Right.
Okay, so then I will put it in electronic version, because I'm used to being a surveyor there, so I will do that. And then the next question is timing. If I sent this out by November 27th, and then have a deadline of the next meeting on December 11th, would that be good? And then we could have it for review on January 2nd. Does that timeframe looks good?
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Perfect.
Great, all right.
Can you put that in my note? Thank you, Ms. Rizzo.
Okay, great.
Anything else on that? Thank you, Ms. Hummel, for taking the lead on that. The next item is 6.02. It's a placeholder item to award a contract for invitation for bid for Cooley Field renovations. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to take us through the information about the project to improve Cooley Field. Thank you, Ms. R.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. Dr. Heron, the proposed agenda item was approved in the fiscal year 17 CIP in the amount of The project includes renovation of the existing field buildings, which includes the field house and the press box. Some of the things being done there are new interior finishes, a new roof, replacing a water heater, and also replacing some air conditioning units in the press box. It's going to consist of demolition of two existing concession stands and installation of two new concession stands. An IFB was entered, yeah, an IFB was entered on October 2nd, 2018, and it was due on October 31st. However, at the time the agenda item was prepared, we did not have the results at that time. So the superintendent is recommending that the board review the project information and be prepared to vote on it at the November 27th meeting. Jim Fauzon, who is the supervisor of facilities and capital projects, and I are here tonight to answer any questions if needed.
Any questions?
What's the period of performance for the contract? The period of performance for the contract?
It's only going to be four months' construction.
Okay, so the construction would take place when?
Starting in, well, right away, in December. It shouldn't take long for us to get all of our bid hour, all of our construction documents together. It's not a very complicated scope of work. We expect four months of construction until it's turned over, so we can use the field for springtime sports.
Barely.
Barely, yeah.
Well, the field's not undergoing renovation, it's the structures around it that are going to go into renovation.
I'm sorry?
Field is not being, not being worked, it's the buildings around it.
And in fact, even though we've not used any of the buildings for the fall sports schedule, we have been using the field for fall sports, too.
Anything else? All right, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is 6.03, which is a resolution codifying the guidelines for discussion, consideration, and decision for additional school capacity and growth. Dr. Heron, do you want to talk about this? Or, I should have asked you before the meeting, I apologize.
Either way, if you do want to take lead, that's fine. I, well, sure.
Not particularly, but I'll fill in the gaps. How about that?
That sounds perfect. Partnership's great. Basically, the chief administrative officers of the school board, city council and board of supervisors, were asked by the liaison committee to work together to come up, to define the tipping points for beginning to talk about the need for additional space in our schools. And we worked together and brought recommendations to the liaison committee, and then are bringing them forward for your consideration tonight. If you notice, there's actually a resolution attached to the agenda item tonight, which outlines the recommendations that we've brought for your consideration. I'll just read those and highlight them for you and for the public. When the average effective capacity of any all elementary or secondary schools reaches 85% using low student projections, enrollment projections, the school division tasks the long-range planning committee with evaluating needs and potential solutions. So in other words, at 85% capacity, we begin discussing and assessing needs for additional space. Second recommendation, when the average effective capacity of any all elementary or secondary school reaches 90% using low student enrollment projections, the school division shall require the long-range planning committee slash capital development committee to provide a recommendation for action. So once you would hit 90% capacity, then it's time to make a decision or bring a recommendation to the board for them, to then make a decision. The other piece of recommendation involves the fact that we are on a very slow trajectory with enrollment right now, and so we're recommending right now to use low enrollment projections. However, annually, we would recommend that the boards adopt this, to suggest that we keep looking at enrollment every single year. If there's a change in the economy and things start to change, and we have more students in our schools, that we may at some point decide to use something other than low projections, if that's appropriate. So the 85 and the 90% would stay, we would just use different projections if we see huge increases in enrollment. We've talked about, certainly the board has discussed this many times, and have had an unofficial suggestion several times, to use 90% as that trigger point. And this is just a way to codify it and put it in writing, and then the intent would be that we would then pass this to the other boards for their consideration, to the city council and board of supervisors. Ms. Cook, if you want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is, you know, to your point about this board discussing this for at least two years, and last year, as part of this discussion, we agreed that I would send the CIP, our CIP budget request, to the localities with a cover letter expressing our thinking that, you know, we start planning at 85 and recommending at 90. And so with that, that triggered a conversation at the liaison committee level, that, you know, that was how this board was operating, and it would be helpful if the other two boards could also agree to that. And again, the idea is to annually review which projections we're using to plan for recommendations, because to Dr. Heron's point, if, and as Mr. Kelly has said many times, if the widening of 64 impacts the growth in this area, we may use different projections that are a little bit more aggressive. Likewise, if, you know, if the projections are, you know, suggesting a down or decline, that would impact our, you know, Dr. Heron's recommendations to this board and so forth. So the idea is for all three boards to be on the same page. If we, if you all agree to this and we adopt it at the next meeting, we would then forward it to the city council and to the board of supervisors for their action. And so that it kind of clarifies that we're all on the same page. So that's the idea. Would that, questions, comments?
I think, how does the enrollment, how has it impacted with bright beginnings?
And we would be looking at the total enrollment of the school, the capacity of the school, and so for elementaries, bright beginnings would be included in this. We're going to have a presentation this evening with all of our projections moving forward. And future Think gives projections without bright beginnings, but this absolutely includes them because they're our students. So 85% start the discussion, including bright beginnings.
So is the 85% in the current year, or is it some projected year out?
Current year, right.
Correct. Basically, it's a trigger to start a conversation.
So then why do we use using low student enrollment projections?
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting question. I think the using student, low student enrollment projections is what is informing the discussion, as opposed to informing the facts on the ground as they are. So in other words, what Dr. Heron and her staff might recommend might be different if you're using a different set of projections, in terms of how to address the enrollment in a new school, additions, whatever. Does that make sense?
I believe so. So when, so when the school system, when a elementary, middle, or high school reaches 85%, the projection, using the low enrollment, that's what you're using to project out what your recommendation would be?
Correct.
Correct. Unless, and I think because we will look at this annually, that could change. That's the piece that's movable in this.
Ms. Barnes is nodding, too.
Okay, that's more, that's important, I guess. So when we're at 85 and 90, is that too late to start thinking about it? Or is that when we should start thinking about it? Or should we say, when, if we're projected to reach 85 in the next five years using the low enrollment, then we got to start thinking about it? Or...
I think we're always thinking about it.
Understand.
But I do, at that point, the long-range planning committee are starting some pretty significant discussion about the needs of the school system and bringing recommendations forward to the CIP committee.
Yeah, so what we don't know is if, is if, when we reach 85%, if we have time to react based upon the level of growth.
Right.
And I think if we look at this annually, if we start to see the trajectory moving up quickly, we would then move to most likely projection, and that's going to trigger the 85 and 90 quicker, if that makes sense.
Or it might cause us to re, if we're looking at this annually, we might change the formula a little bit. I mean, I think one thing that's important to know is that we are already there at high school and elementary school. So what, the idea is to institute this now, so that if we're able to get down to below 85%, that we don't get up to, you know, up to 98 or 100% in the future. So this is not necessarily to address what we're facing today, but to prevent that in the future, so that we always have capacity for, in our buildings.
Well, I guess, I don't know, maybe what I have to say is probably more appropriate to talk about when we get to the proposed capital improvement plan. They are somewhat related, but let me, I think, I think the 85%, I think that number can be misleading, because I also think that you have to take into consideration the size of the classes that are in that school. You may have a school that actually is below 85%, but some of the classes are much larger than they probably might be otherwise. My concern is, let me wait till we get to the capital improvements. Because I'm, I'm sensing that we're being really thoughtful and careful about this, but I just want to reinforce that. Because we have done, we've gone down this road in the past, and we've ended up with structures. Our decisions have been made by prior boards, which have put us in situations where we might not otherwise have wanted to be. And then one of them was the one to shut down James Blair and move central office over there. The other one was, I did a tour, a pretty in-depth tour of James Blair. One of the things that struck me is, without a tremendous amount of thought, classroom square footage was reduced at some point, either as a result of value engineering, whatever it might be. And I believe what it has led to, if you walk around those floors and look in those classrooms, they are really tight. They're very, the space that is available for the students, all of the desks are in rows, and they're pretty much crammed in there. The assistant principal is almost outside of the building. She's right up against the windows in the very front part of the building, in a postage-stamped size office. Now, it's my understanding, an assistant principal is very much involved in the discipline of students. And to be in such a small space when trying to deal with students, those were decisions that were made long before we moved into the school. They were made by boards. And one of the things, I don't know if you folks remember, but we, one board meeting, we had a very long list of value engineering recommendations. Do you remember that list? Remember that list? And we had very little conversation about those recommendations. I think I made a comment or two about one of them, and it may have been related to the size of the gym, I can't exactly what it is. But I think some of those decisions, we accepted those recommendations without necessarily understanding what some of the ramifications were. And I'll be the first to say that I wouldn't know what the ramifications are. I'm looking, I'm looking at our administrative staff, people involved in the building itself, also the input from teachers and administrators. And I think at the last go-around, that was pretty well orchestrated, and I don't think the opportunities were there, but there was such a rush. We needed that middle school. Oh, gosh, we've got to have that middle school. There was such a rush to get that going that I think that school is going to have to deal with some of the consequences of that rush as a result of that. So all I'm really saying is, let's just look really, let's be really careful. Look really carefully. I did some, some of the math, but let me, let me put, we'll, I'll wait until we get to enrollment update, ten-year enrollment estimates. I'll hold off until then. But I just think it's, it's, I mean, I'm, that really bothered me walking around James Blair. Because that, that was supposed to be, and we did decide to make the room smaller. And as a result, because that's what the board, that's what we're supposed to do.
Is that relevant?
But we have to have.
Is that relevant to the topic at hand?
Sorry?
Is that relevant to the, to the, what we have?
No, no, no. It's just that.
Just checking.
But, but I just, these numbers aren't, you know, they're not magic. It's not eighty-five percent. What does that really mean? That's kind of what I'm talking about, Jim.
I get you.
So are we all comfortable with taking action on this resolution and then sending it to the other, to the two funding bodies?
And I support the resolution. I think it's a really good idea that it's like, we're all together on that. So it's not, don't misunderstand me, I'm not, I think it's a good thing for the schools.
I hear you. I hear you. So, so are we all, you know, ready to do that? All right, great. So we'll take action on this at the next meeting then?
Yes.
Are you okay, Jim?
I mean, I'd like to see eighty-five percent projected in the next five years. And so, because if you look at how long it takes the community to do, to come to a building decision.
Yes.
That, that's, could conceivably almost be ten years. And so if we're at eighty-five percent today, but we're not going to have a building for five to seven years, I'm not sure that eighty-five percent is a good starting, if we're at eighty-five percent today, that that's a good starting point. So if, if, if our low enrollment projection numbers say that in the next three to five years, whatever, pick a number, that we're going to be at eighty-five percent, that's when we start developing a plan for how we're going to feed the CIP over the next ten years.
So I think that, that those aren't mutually exclusive, just because I don't think this resolution prevents Dr. Heron from putting something out ten years in a CIP. I, I think I would be, so that it's on the horizon. I think what this triggers is an acceptance or a willingness for the three jurisdictions to work together. And I-
You're not going to be surprised.
Right.
It's like, this is really important.
Yeah. And I, and I think I would, I would caution changing this at this point. And I think this is probably something that would be good to do now. And then if it's not working, to revisit it over the next year. But this is something that Dr. Heron and Mr. Trivet and the three CAOs have worked together on. And so I would, if we push there, we don't know what the reaction would be elsewhere. So I think that, given that the, the chief executives of the three, I support it as is, although I take your point. But I don't think it prevents Dr. Heron from putting something in the CIP ten years out.
If the whole purpose was to get the three funding, the three, the two funding partners and us on the same page, I'm not sure that that does that. But that's fine. I'll vote for it. I just don't think, I don't think it provides enough clarity.
Right. You almost shouldn't have to have something like that to get the three of them together. But, but if they think it's important, I mean, the other members of the liaison committee, I'm, I'm not going to, you know, I don't, I don't object to it. I just don't, I don't really think it's necessary, but I'm going to support it.
If I could just add that, I think the purpose is to try to facilitate that, what has been a very long decision-making process to get a school built, that if we all agree that we really discuss in detail starting at eighty-five and make a decision at ninety, and everybody says that's, that's what we're going to try to move forward with pending funding, of course, it gives, it gives us time to plan. But Mr. Kelly, absolutely, when we start to talk about the CIP later, you'll see how this frames that conversation because obviously something's going to come into the ten-year view before it ever becomes eighty-five percent.
All right, so we'll put it on the next agenda for adoption. That brings us to seven point zero one equity through engagement, tier-one tiered systems of support. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased this evening to have Dr. Laura Estes with us, who's going to present some information on early childhood programs and Title I resources. I think almost a year ago, you had a presentation of some of the programs that we're using to intervene with students, and we thought it was appropriate to bring you some updated data to show how some of those programs are working. Dr. Estes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. I am pleased to have the opportunity to share updates with you on our ongoing work in Title I intervention methods as part of our Equity Through Engagement series. It is helpful to be reminded that everything I'm going to share with you tonight is work that is above and beyond the classroom instruction from our teachers and our reading specialists. As you know, Title I schools receive additional funding and provide extra support services focused on early literacy at the kindergarten through grade-three range to help close achievement And tonight's highlights will include a refresher on who we serve in Title I, a review of two of the three supplemental offerings, which include leveled literacy intervention systems and Successful Start intervention in kindergarten, as well as a look at student growth progress through these supplemental instructional methods. As in previous years, seven of the nine elementary schools in WJCC received Title I funding. Title I school eligibility is based on a federal formula for funding for schools that are at or above the division average of economic need for free and reduced lunch, which was reported last in our grant application at thirty-four percent. It is important to note that once a school qualifies for Title I funding, any student with academic need is eligible for K through three services. Title I schools include Claire Bird Baker, DJ Montague, Jay Blaine Blatton, James River, Laurel Lane, Matthew Whaley, and Norge. As I have previously shared with the board, we expanded Title I to include a small number of third-grade students in the spring of two thousand sixteen in small group instruction model called leveled literacy intervention, which we will revisit today. And since then, Title I has continued to support third grade as funding and staffing The leveled literacy intervention system includes comprehensive lesson plans built around high-quality leveled texts designed for accelerated learning. It features reading and writing around text, word study, vocabulary, comprehension, fluency development, along with writing components and test-taking strategies. The texts are highly engaging for students and build on a successful experience. Implementation of LLI has included three years of annual training and follow-up for our teachers and tutors, along with the necessary resources and materials. With the completion of two full years of wide-scale implementation, we can now see some data trends. Overall, highlights include maintaining the percentage of students reaching on or above grade-level benchmarks for reading with fifty-four percent reaching grade-level goals. We had an eight percent increase in the percentage of students nearly reaching grade level and a seven percent decrease of those students considered well below grade level. More specific highlights by grade level include a large success in kindergarten growth, which really features the heart of our goal in reducing the early literacy gaps and better equipping students to learn from first-time instruction in classrooms. Following the success of kindergarten intervention of those needing additional support in first grade, we see an eighty percent combined result of students served either nearly reaching the mark or reaching grade level. In second grade, we significantly reduced the number of students well below, bringing more students closer to the grade level. And likewise, third grade experienced upward trends with a decrease of those well below grade level by ten percent. While these outcomes show final program status for students, what it isn't able to show you is the overall student growth for students served in supplemental instructions. So let's take a look at the data in another way. Based on the beginning-of-the-year reading level data and the end-of-year reading levels as reported by classroom teachers utilizing division assessments, we can look at the amount of growth by level across time. Featured this way, the data show overall growth for students with an average gain of one full year or more. Lastly, as a quick comparison, you can see the one-to-one reading recovery method garners considerable gains with an average growth of one point six years. So first-grade students are served across two methods based on level of need. While the reading recovery instructional method is not featured in this presentation at this time, it is helpful to see the comparison of growth across all three programmatic approaches as we'll see Successful Start data next. Similarly to the leveled literacy intervention system, Successful Start also uses small groups of three students for lessons that consist of reading to children, with children, and writing with children in kindergarten. In this model, professional development is the key to Successful Start as kindergarten teachers are trained alongside Title I staff to ensure continuous support and best practice in reading instruction. As part of the training, kindergarten teachers start literacy instruction in small groups from the very beginning of the year. DJ and JBB are in their third year of Successful Start, and Laurel Lane is training teachers this year. These schools were identified through a needs assessment process that featured the level of openness and readiness for change in overall literacy practice. Student growth from this model that features high-quality training of classroom teachers alongside Title I teachers shows remarkable progress replicated across two years of As we enter into a third year of implementation for Successful Start, the data show level maintenance of year-one and two outcomes with an average independent reading level equivalent to that of a first, first quarter first-grade student. Students in Successful Start classrooms ended the year with significantly higher growth, met or exceeded goals, and maintained across summer months in entering into first grade. As you can see in this chart, the data provide a nice visual of student growth experienced in Successful Start kindergarten classrooms. Additionally, kindergarteners can write an average of thirty-one high-frequency words, understand the concept of message-making and story-writing, as well as have a beginning literacy processing system underway. You also may recall the October second presentation in this year's two thousand and eighteen-nineteen Equity Series, which included highlights of academic progress by Mr. Thorpe, where several action steps were featured. As the division focuses efforts towards maximizing first-time teaching and learning and implementing consistent use of small group instruction, these strategies will also assist Title I and supplemental methods for those who need more. The use of the LLI implementation fidelity checklist, along with increased coaching opportunities, will frame growth goals for Title I. Further, the Successful Start model already includes high-quality, ongoing professional development as the trademark of its highly successful model. So thus, as of this year, WJCC is using a train-the-trainer model to increase our capacity to sustain and support current Successful Start classrooms and expand to other Title I schools as appropriate. These action steps provide continuous program monitoring and coaching to increase the use of all supplemental services in Title I. As we come to a close tonight, it's important to feature how Title I services align with research about key factors in success with the overall literacy model approach that we have here in WJCC, as well as our strategic plan goals. The approaches you heard about tonight, along with our ongoing use of reading recovery, our one-to-one method of instruction, offer small group learning opportunities that match instruction to the level of need and accelerate students toward the average band of performance. The hallmark for all Title I programs is a quality professional development model to increase effective instruction for all students and to truly be a supplemental offering to good first-time instruction in classrooms. Thus, our ongoing work in Title I, coupled with the strategic plan goals and action steps, is aligned to elevate WJCC beyond excellence in literacy. And that was a lot of information, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Estes?
Yeah, just, just for clarification for those who may not understand that, could you just briefly explain leveled literacy?
Sure. Leveled literacy intervention is a small group approach. It utilizes reading and writing instruction and includes word study, fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary development. So a teacher would sit with a group of three students and instruct them at their exact level for reading and writing and literacy. The goal is to continually monitor their progress and move them forward so it's not remediated or watered down. It's meant to accelerate them to the average of the class.
So it's, it's not leveled like reading recovery is leveled?
It is similar, Dr. Beers.
So, so the reading, so you actually, you select texts that is leveled? That's, that's what I want.
Sorry, yes, yes. Perfect.
You could have answered that yourself, Dr. Beers. You could have answered the question yourself.
No, no, but I, I don't think everybody out there fully understands that.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions?
Sometimes it's good to ask questions, just so other people can hear the answers.
Any other questions for Dr. Estes?
Yeah. So what do we do for our children that have these needs that aren't in Title I schools?
We have similar programs in the non-Title I schools. What the distinction is for Title I schools, schools is that we offer more of it. So we have a reading specialist, a student support teacher, similar methods, leveled literacy intervention. Reading recovery is offered in non-Title I schools. But with Title I funding, we are able to supplement and have more teachers, more tutors, and more availability for these services.
Okay. So it's not like the schools that aren't Title I schools aren't getting the same level of attention? I just wanted to-
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. How do we determine which students receive a particular model, whether it's the, yeah, the leveled literacy or the Successful Start results? How do we determine which student?
Sure. So Successful Start is designed for kindergarten, so that is the only grade level that is receiving that intervention at JBB, DJ, and now Laurel Lane. So all students are benefiting in all kindergarten classrooms in those three schools. The goal is that by raising the classroom teacher's level of effectiveness with all students, it also raises Title I outcomes for students who are identified as Title I. For first grade, we identify students through the use of literacy assessments, and we serve students by need, basically from the bottom up. And so students who need the most intensive instruction get one-on-one first, and all other students go into the small group model. And as students make progress, move in or out, we continually revisit who's next on, in the program. And we're generally able to serve all the students who need it, but we try to move students in and out as availability and progress allows.
And just one follow-up question. So using the train-the-trainer model, is it the goal that across the division, all of our elementary schools will eventually have the Successful Start in kindergarten classrooms?
That's a great question. It's such an intensive program, and it is so focused on high-quality professional development. We are implementing it at a level that we're able to do with the capacity of the trainer and to continue to support schools that have it. So the additional trainer allows us to sustain and then possibly add on. So it's something we can expand, and we'll just need to revisit how much we can support. We have seven Title I schools, so we would need to think about that over time. Yes.
Yes.
I have one more. So reading recovery is, is that a program for second grade or third grade?
It's first.
That's first, first grade? And is that slowly being phased out, or is it being supplemented by what? No, no, I hope not, because I'm, I'm, reading recovery, my son wasn't reading recovery, and it was fantastic. And it was just the best thing ever. And I still love the teacher that helped move him to reading. It was just wonderful. So it's, it's staying, but there are other?
Correct. So the one-on-one model- So, the one-on-one model, as we've discussed, is really for the most intensive needed, you know, program for students. But we have so many more students who would benefit from small group, thus we've expanded with the use of LLI.
Okay.
And tutors who also help with the LLI. So, we have a commitment to maintain reading recovery and continue to support that model as well as expanding the small-group instruction through leveled literacy intervention and also into second and third grades. I didn't mean to leave them out. So, we rank, order, and serve students in level of need based on second, third-grade literacy outcomes as well.
So, it's just giving more choices for more students depending on need?
Yes, yes. We were really focusing on these two methods because they were the newest addition to our model for Title I programming, so we feel like we have a good menu of services between level of need and kindergarten through third at this point.
Because we implement new things, we want to bring data to the front to show if they're working or not, because if they're not working, we're going to go, we're not going to continue and sustain something that's not worth making students successful.
Mrs. Young?
I just have a question about the data here. What was the sample group for this?
Is it the LLI data you're referring to?
Yes, I'm referring to the LLI data.
Yes, so that is the data for all students served. At the end of last year, these are the outcomes for all of our students served across the 2017-18 school year.
Okay, and so then my question is, when it says nearly on-
Yes.
How close to nearly on are we?
It's a great question. It's within one-quarter of the grade-level benchmark. So, we're nearly there, and as you saw, the average growth was one year.
Right.
So, some of our goals this year will be to continue to improve maybe a year and a quarter or a year and a half so that we take students across the finish line. And the coach, the fidelity checklist model and our observations and coaching visits are going to be designed to focus on helping teachers get students further along.
Okay, and I mean, I totally understand what you're talking about and appreciate everything that's being done. My big question, I'm looking at that 35%, well below. They're going into fourth grade, what happens?
Yes, so we do have additional support system with the reading specialist and the student-support teachers as well as a literacy team in the school buildings and our MTSS teams who monitor student progress. When Title I services cannot continue up through all grades, they pick up, and we collaborate together to ensure students continue to have services to meet their needs. It's just not done through Title I.
Because I'm very concerned about that student population that is going into fourth, fifth, and further grades that are not reading on grade level. That is disastrous for them as students, and, you know, their future hinges upon them being able to read.
Yes, and what's nice about the expansion of our Title I services in K3 is that it's allowed our reading specialist and student-support teachers to increase their caseload at the higher grades. So, we really have a comprehensive approach across all those services in each building.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Anything else?
Sure. So, as I look at the, jumping off from where Mrs. Young was, so the third grade where we have 24, 25, 27, those are the students that are served by LLI in the third grade?
Correct.
So, it's not all third grade, it's just the students that are served by, served by the LLI?
Correct, that is correct. So, we have students who may be served by the reading specialist or student-support teachers who are also getting additional services. This is just the data for our Title I students.
So, of all of our Title I schools in the third grade, we had roughly 75 third graders that were served in all of our Title I schools?
Correct.
Okay, so, so, so if that's 75 for third grade, and then we had 140 or so for second grade, and then it just keeps, it kind of keeps growing as you go back. How many, how many are served by first-grade reading recovery-ish?
Ish.
I don't expect you to know the number to the nearest tenth of a point.
Usually, it's about the equivalent of six first-grade classrooms when you look at their literacy group. The teachers, reading recovery teachers do literacy group and one-on-one. So, yes, I can't quote the exact number off the top of my head.
So, six first-grade classes would be about 120?
Yes, yes, that sounds about right.
Because, I mean, obviously, the reading recovery results are better than any, right? Because it's one-on-one, and they get to work specific to the student.
Yes, and they also have the farthest to go. So, you saw their, they had the most success with the 1.6, seven years' worth of growth.
Right.
Those students have the greatest need, and so they've really come a long ways.
And the other thing too, it's a very labor-intensive approach, but that's why it yields the kinds of results that it does. It's very much, is very much one-on-one, and the data shows the results of that.
Yes.
But my question, I mean, I understand reading recovery, but my question, when we're talking about 1.6 years' worth of growth, sometimes we're talking from children that know nothing. Literally, don't, they don't know the ABCs, they don't know beginning sounds, et cetera. So, sometimes they may end up really with 1.6 years of growth, they may end up at beginning of first-grade level, right?
Usually, they end up about second-grade level or second-grade, second quarter. So, they may come in with deficits like you're describing sort of at a zero balance, but we, in general, we take them up to a level 16 or 18 and higher into second grade.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yeah, and that's, that's an investment in those children that I think is very important and obviously very beneficial.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Estes, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to 7.02 fiscal year 2019 enrollment update, 10-year enrollment estimates. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring to you the 10-year enrollment projections from Future Think, and Ms. Barnes is going to present the updated data this evening. As you're aware, we already presented the recommendations of the capital improvement committee. Those were based on old data, and this is the new data tonight. Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. This evening, I'm going to highlight the projections that were generated by Future Think for WJCC schools this year. So, looking at this first slide, the historical funded enrollment is presented. As you can see, there's been a steady climb in total enrollment with a very slight decline from fiscal year 18 to the September 30th number for fiscal year 19 of just 16 students. However, our enrollment has grown by 958 students during the last decade. The information presented here is from the September 30th child count that has been submitted to the Virginia Department of Education. So, this slide shows our actual enrollment in the first column as it compares to the Future Think projected enrollment from the last fall. Just to note, as the division had not finalized, our plans for redistricting at the time that the projection was created last year, the projections for James Blair were actually determined by moving a set percentage of 20% from each of the existing middle schools. Therefore, the actual numbers compared to the projected numbers vary widely. So, the next column shows the variance between the actual and the projected numbers, and the final column contains the percentage of that variance. So, there was a considerable increase at Matthew Whaley, and this was offset by a decrease at James River. However, it's my understanding that there are two self-conclusion classes that were moved from Math, moved to Matthew Whaley, so that this was moving students back to their school of origin. So, our projected enrollment for this year was actually 11,492. Enrollment was down from the projection by 31 students, and we were at 11,461. So, the Future Think projection once again resulted in less than a 1% variance and has been the record for Future Think for the last seven years, this being the eighth. Also to mention, there's a comparison is with Future Think's low-projection model, which is also the projection that we use for budget simply because it's the most conservative, and you want to use that when you're determining your revenue, because much of our revenue is from the state, and it's dependent on our ADM.
So, the projected column is low projected?
Yes, sir.
But could you repeat about Matthew Whaley again?
Sure.
I didn't quite get that.
There were two, I think they're self-
Self-contained classes were moved from James River to Matthew Whaley. The students are zoned to Matthew Whaley, and the space was there last year to move two classes. So, that accounts for some of the growth at Matthew Whaley, but not at all.
Not even close.
Yeah.
I was like, that, okay, because I was like 40. So, we don't know what that breakdown is. We don't know like how many were in the self-contained that were moved.
Yes, we do. I believe it's about 18, 18 students, and so the rest was growth that we weren't expecting that arrived in Matthew Whaley.
And with, just how to create, do you may know the capacity of Matthew Whaley? I don't, I can go look at it.
I know the-
Capacity.
Capacity, yeah.
Well, you have it in some other of your handouts there.
So, Matthew Whaley's capacity is 490, and we're at 541? Roger that.
This next slide compares our actual enrollment from 1718, that to 1819. And as I mentioned earlier, we saw a very slight drop in enrollment of 16 students, or it's 14 one-hundredths of percent of a drop. And since James Blair was not in operation last fiscal year, and the movement of students from the other middle schools had an effect on the variance, I've noted that the overall difference in the total enrollment from middle schools was actually just an increase of one student. So, it's four one-hundredths of a percent. Just thought if you looked at that and you saw the, you know, the extreme variations. So, Future Think combines several methods when determining the projections for the upcoming years. One of these methods is the cohort survival method, and this takes the number of students from the live births in the area for an age group and compares that to the kindergarten enrollment. And it takes into consideration the historical fluctuation of student count for that grade level as those students move through their school career. So, the personnel at Future Think also use, they contact the county and the city and pulled housing data, and they compare this to historical enrollment, dividing that by the number of total occupancy permits, and this establishes a yield factor which is multiplied by the number of housing units. So, Future Think also looks at the land saturation analysis within the city and county, and they take into consideration the amount of remaining acreage that's undeveloped and the planned rate of completion. They look, also look at the area zoning policies and the types of construction being approved, and then they try to determine where the areas of growth are. So, Future Think has put together the projections, but we do need to keep in mind that these are only projections, they're just estimates. Contained in the report are four projection models, and as it is, the most likely, I mean, see, the first being is most likely, and this is traditionally what's used for planning. However, we have found, well, when using this for planning, it gives you time to prepare in advance. However, we found that the low projection has been-
Most accurate.
Most likely, actually. And this could be because of the economy, and of course, when the, when it took a downturn, things slowed down, and that, the low projection is based on our economic values, and each other projection gets a little bit more progressively aggressive, I guess is a good way to put it. It takes into consideration bank rates, income, looking at, you know, what is it? Employment rates, and so as that increases, then you could lean more towards the higher So, Future Think, the most likely projection indicates a steady climb in enrollment and an increase of 1,030 students over the next 10 years. I do need to mention though that the pre-K enrollment numbers are not in any of pre-K in Future Think's projections. So, but pre-K numbers won't grow unless we grow them? Correct. Exactly. I was going to say, and the reason they do this is because, you know, we use the ADM for calculating our revenue.
Right.
And, and pre-K is pretty well set. And so, when you look at our projections later on, we've taken the number of children that we have in pre-K now, and we've added that straight across each year.
Right.
So, the Future Think most likely projection indicates a steady climb of enrollment, and there's an increase of 1,030 students over the next 10 years. And I do, I just want to remind us again that this doesn't have pre-K. So, when you're looking at this slide, the increase is by building level, and it uses the most likely projection, and the elementary schools are in blue, and they show an increase of 247 students. And from fiscal year 20 through fiscal year 29. And the middle schools are in orange, and this projection shows an increase of 172 students.
Oh, I see, I see.
The high schools are in green, and in this projection, it indicates an increase of 494 students from the projection for 2020 to 2029. So, this graph represents the Future Think low or most conservative projection for WJCC's total enrollment over the next 10 years, and projects our enrollment will increase by 316 students from the current count of 11,461 to 11,777 in fiscal year 29. So, you'll notice the slight dip in 2021, and this is currently, it's because of our 11th grade class. Our 10th grade class is slightly smaller, so of course, the 11th grade class will graduate in the spring of '20, and the next class is likely smaller, so there's, that's why there's a dip.
Actually, the ninth grade coming in is smaller than the 12th grade leaving.
Well, it's-
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess you could look at it.
That's true, that works as well.
So, basically-
But it does fluctuate.
Between most likely and low, we should expect between 30 and 90 new students every year for the next 10 years, right? 300 or 900 over 10 years.
Higher math there.
Yes, sir.
No algebra involved.
Haven't our low enrollments been actually quite accurate over the last 10 years?
Very.
So, why don't we just use low enrollment? And if we use low enrollment, we're looking at 315 kids.
Dr. Beers-
And, yeah, go on, sorry.
When we come to the capital improvement proposal tonight, we're using low enrollment. We're choosing to use that, and to Mr. Kelly's point, if it changes, it's not giving us much time to react because we're going to do that, but watch out for a change so that we can change to most likely if it starts moving up more quickly.
And that's why we're looking at both.
Yeah, what I'm, with the low enrollments, it is only 315 students, and we're talking about, you know, we've been talking about a number of options in terms of dealing with, you know, with the growth of our student population, from expanding existing schools to building, you know, building a new school. And I'm just, that's why that thoughtful slow stuff, I think it's really, really important because ultimately, somebody's, you know, taxpayers are going to pay for those things, and I think it's, it's really important to not just watch the numbers. The other thing is, you know, it's quite possible for enrollments to go up one year and come down the next year. Go up, that, you know, that, so when you, when you say 85% capacity, is that average over, you know, a period of years, or, you know, gee, this year it's going to be below 85, oh my God, next year we're going up to 92, and now we're back down to 87. It's like, I, and I think the other thing is, the other question I have, the capacity numbers that we use, have those changed? My assumption is they've changed over the years because we've had, you know, new programs come in, we've, you know, we've done some different kinds of things, or is these the same, are these capacity numbers the same ones that we saw in 2010, or have they changed?
When we come to the CIP, the capacity numbers, that's the- When we come to the CIP, the, the capacity numbers, that's the design capacity of the building that doesn't change over time. The use of the building may change over time, but not the design capacity, which will always be the, the original design of the building.
So if I had, because I, I actually did, I, I looked, I went back and looked at twenty-ten projections, you know, the, the actual numbers. And not so much the prediction, but the capacity. And, and, of course, back then, we didn't have as many schools. But the, but the capacity numbers were the same, so they really haven't.
So they'll stay stable, but, you know, your point is well made. Programatically, the use of the building impacts how highly capacity can go.
Exactly.
The utilization part.
Okay. I just wanted to make, I think that capacity thing is, is important and to fully understand what it means. And, and I know everybody thinks eighty-five percent is magic, but you can have very successful schools that are over eighty-five percent. Okay, but that's a topic for another.
I hope so, because we have several.
Yeah, we do. We do have very successful schools that are over. So.
Go ahead, Ms. Barnes.
Uh, this slide shows the low projection by school level. And the elementary, of course, is in blue again. And it increases by a hundred and ten students between the fiscal year twenty and twenty-nine. Middle school is in orange, and it's projected to increase by seventeen students. And the high school is expected to increase by a hundred and eighty students from the projection from fiscal year twenty to twenty-nine.
I'm sorry, Ms. Barnes, Mrs. Young had a question.
Oh, sure. Okay, I, I just want to, in all of these projections, when we're looking at the elementary schools, that does not include bright beginnings.
Correct.
And right now, how many bright beginning students do we have?
Three hundred and forty-four.
And, and we have kids on a waiting list also, from what I understand. Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so along with, when we're talking about capacity, was bright beginnings figured? I mean, we'll get to the capacity, I understand. But was that figured into the capacity numbers, the bright beginning students?
Basically, when we start to look at our needs, we've figured in the pre-K into the total numbers. And we're going to show you a chart that will show exactly where we are including pre-K.
Thank you very much. That's important.
Including pre-K as it currently stands, not including the waiting list.
Correct.
Right.
Does not include the waiting list.
Not including the waiting list. So it doesn't, not a reflection of need, but a reflection of current practice.
And do we know how many kids are on the waiting list?
We do, fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Okay, thank you.
Well, the purpose of this table is to compare the two projections, the low projection and the most likely projection, and how they compare to our available capacity. So with the most likely projection, the division will be over capacity by twenty-six students in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Let's see, with the low projection, the total high school enrollment will have two hundred and twenty-one seats available across the division next year, and only forty-one available seats in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So this table shows the Future Think's low projection enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for high schools. The blue area indicates that the school is at or above eighty-five percent of its capacity. The yellow areas indicate that the school is at or above ninety percent of its capacity, while the red areas indicate that the school is at or, at or above one hundred percent of its capacity. So in this projection, Lafayette High School exceeds eighty-five percent of its capacity in the fall of two thousand twenty-five. Jamestown is currently over its capacity. It's at a hundred and seven percent. And War Hill High School is currently at ninety-six percent. So the overall enrollment for high schools is currently at ninety-six percent, and it's projected to be at ninety-nine percent of its capacity in the fall of two thousand twenty-nine. So this slide compares the total projected enrollment from each of the projections to the capacity and shows the available seats for the middle schools. So with the most likely projection, the division will have room for two hundred and fifty-eight students in fiscal year twenty-nine. With the low projection, the total middle school enrollment will have four hundred and fifty-four seats available across the division next year, and four hundred and thirty seats, there's four hundred and thirty-seven available seats in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So this table shows Future Think's low projection enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for middle schools. And once again, the blue areas are at eighty-five percent or above. The yellow is at ninety percent or above. And the red areas is at over a hundred percent. So in this projection, Berkeley Middle School is below the eighty-five percent threshold at seventy-six point five percent. Tuana Middle School is currently at eighty-nine percent of its capacity and goes to ninety percent in the fall of two thousand twenty, drops slightly to eighty-nine percent in two thousand twenty-one, and goes back up to ninety-one percent in two thousand twenty-two, and stays over ninety percent. Hornsby Middle School is under the eighty-five percent threshold until the fall of two thousand twenty-two, and when it's projected to be at eighty-five point nine percent and stays above eighty-five percent. James Blair Middle School is currently at ninety point five percent of its capacity, and it's projected to stay over ninety percent. So currently, the total enrollment for middle schools is at eighty-four point four percent, and it's expected to remain over eighty-five percent with a high of eighty-eight point six percent in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. So as before, this slide compares the total projected enrollment from each of the projections to the capacity and shows the available seats for the elementary school level. With the most likely projection, the division will still have room for a hundred and forty-three students in fiscal twenty-nine. With the low projection, the total elementary school enrollment will have four hundred and seventeen seats available across the division next year, and three hundred and seven available in fiscal twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And once again, this does not include the pre-K population. And if you take into consideration the pre-K population, with the most likely projection, the division will have room for only forty-six students next year, and will be over capacity by seventeen seats in fiscal twenty-one. With the low projection, the total enrollment, the total elementary school enrollment will have only seventy-three seats available across the division next year, and will be over capacity by thirty-seven students in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So to note, we're using a constant figure, as I mentioned earlier, for, to project our pre-K enrollment as the, that's kind of a designated amount. So this table shows the capacity levels of our elementary schools. And as there are nine, and it's, since there are nine of them, this isn't, you know, it's not, it's not a terrific graphic for this, for the, for the screen. However, it's, it's really easy to see that four out of our nine elementary schools are currently over one hundred percent of the capacity. And two schools are over ninety percent of their capacity. And one elementary school is over eighty-five percent, uh, the threshold. So on only one elementary school is, falls below the eighty-five percent capacity threshold. So the division's elementary school as a whole is currently at ninety-eight point one percent, and will be over one hundred percent in the fall of two thousand twenty-eight with pre-K. So we'll have these, the Future Think enrollment report, it will be posted to our website. And we'll continue to use the Future Think low projection for developing the two thousand twenty budget, as that's the most conservative and the most fiscally sound. And I'm comfortable using those numbers of enrollment for our revenue. So I'm happy to entertain any other questions.
Any questions for Ms. Barnes? We kind of asked as you went along. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Mills?
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Barnes.
Thank you.
Next up is the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-nine superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan. Before I toss it to Dr. Heron, I just want to talk about the process. So today, Dr. Heron will present to us her proposal. And then we will have an opportunity to discuss it today and at our second meeting in November with a plan to adopt and discuss, if necessary, in the, at the December meeting, which there's only one. So if that, if there's not any questions about process, toss it to Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Barnes is going to stay up with us to present the proposed capital improvement plan this evening. When the CIP committee recommendations were presented, we didn't have the final projections for enrollment. You've just received those this evening. Tonight, we also discussed as to frame this conversation, guidelines for building new schools and starting to talk about the need for space. Using eighty-five percent as the trigger point to start having a conversation in earnest, and ninety percent at the point where we must make a decision so that a school will be built to serve our students. We will be reviewing that annually as we take it forward to the two boards as well. Also of note, as we go into the presentation this evening, there are some projects that are being considered by the Board of Supervisors this evening in an end-of-year spending plan. They will appear still in the, in my CIP this evening. But if they are approved by the Board of Supervisors and the City Council, they will come out of the plan that's being presented this evening. Those are the Berkeley Middle School well removal, Jamestown entrance design, and War Hill High School track. So that will be presented on the screen as well. There's a couple of additional slides. You'll notice compared to the committee presentation, there is a, a data slide that compares our elementary school space with, with other divisions, just to give you a sense of how many schools and students that other schools have. And there's a little bit of research on the impact of school size on the quality, on student achievement, and, and some other aspects of schools. And Mr. Thorpe and, and Dr. Murphy are here to answer questions when those slides come up as well. Notably, when analyzing elementary school capacity, you've already seen some of the numbers, we are at ninety-eight percent now. And by two, twenty-twenty-seven, we'll be at one hundred and one percent. Even without pre-K, we're at ninety-one point eight percent right now. We've talked about ninety percent being at the point at which we take action and ask for a school. So with or without pre-K, even if that becomes a consideration this evening, it, it's time to ask for a school because we need one for our students at the elementary level. And just a couple of comments on high school space before we start as well. We are at ninety-six percent capacity now. And if we have adopted again a ninety percent decision point, then we need space of some kind. We don't believe there's enough increase in student enrollment over the next ten years to ask for a new high school. Therefore, the committee recommendation for adding space to three high schools will remain in place in this presentation as well. And I'll keep any other comments, and we'll probably tag them as we go through the, the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening again. Um, let's see. Just as, some points of reference and information, as, as you know, the county and city appropriate, or they develop a five-year capital improvement plan. But the funds are only appropriated on an annual basis. So as I mentioned last month, the school board began developing a ten-year plan back in fiscal year seventeen, and this enables us to project our plan for future needs, and also gives us the opportunity to, to alert our funding partners so that they can begin to prepare and budget for additional needs. So the estimates for all of the projects in the capital improvement plan include a ten percent for A and E costs, five percent for contingency, and an escalation rate of three percent. And any, you may see a new project appear in the CIP for the first time. Actually, it's not really the first time to you now because you saw them during the CIP recommendation, committee recommendations. So. But however, any new project in there is, could be because of state mandates or something that is just additional updated information. So as we begin to look at the modifications or addition to fiscal year two thousand twenty, there are a few projects which we've mentioned in the year-end spending plan, which is being presented, as Dr. Heron said, this evening to our funding partners. In looking at some of the modifications to the fiscal year two thousand twenty CIP, the well at Berkeley Middle School is currently in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one CIP plan, and has been included in the CIP several times and since nineteen, or since fiscal year sixteen. And it's been pushed back. So we've been advised that this can be a potential safety hazard. So we, we put it in this year's budget. So also, we've received a revised estimate, and the increase is one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. So also included in the year-end spending plan, as Dr. Heron mentioned, as well as the CIP, is the entrance redesign for Jamestown High School. And we're thankful to our funding partners for the advancement of funding that enabled the division to begin working on the other schools' redesigns this fiscal year. So each of the other schools have either received the funding or have funding designated for them, or they've actually had the redesign completed. So the estimated cost for this redesign is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. Another urgent project that has been recently presented as a safety concern is the need to replace the track at War Hill High School. Severe weather this past year has created tripping hazards that have made the track unsuitable for use. So the repair and replacement of the track is included in both the year-end and the CIP. And the estimated cost to regrade the property and replace the track is five hundred and nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So as presented earlier, this might look familiar, this is our current enrollment, projection for the elementary schools. And it's the Future Think low projection, the most conservative. So as you can see, we're currently utilizing ninety-eight point one percent of our capacity across all elementary schools, and are projected to be at more than one hundred percent in fiscal year two thousand twenty-eight.
I guess I have a question about, I noticed it's not, I don't see it sort of at the end here, the phase-two expansion of James Blair Middle School. What, and I'm looking at the projected enrollments, what's the expansion for?
The expansion.
More students at that particular school?
Um, the projections currently are suggesting that James Blair will not be full in the next ten years. So it, it's, it's, it's in the outer years. It's not within the next five years.
So, so, I mean, actually come to pass then?
I believe it will at some point, but not in the near future.
Right, right. That, no, that, because that's important, because I know, I know people, you know, that's sort of in, in, you know, out in the public, that at some point, I mean, it looked like, I thought it was going to be sooner than later, but now I see there really isn't a, there isn't a much of a need for that.
I think the need is greater in, in other places.
Sure. And I, one other, can I ask? I don't know where this goes in, and I don't want anybody to get in trouble, but, did it take a tour of operations?
I took a tour of operations. He didn't, he said nothing. No, no, he didn't say anything. He didn't. I talked to, I talked to guys who had their shirts sleeves rolled up, and they were under the hoods of the buses and, you know, just really working in there. And I like to, I like to think that all of our staff, teachers, administrators, they all work in air-conditioned places. And I would like to see if we can, somewhere in the not-too-distant future, figure out a way to provide that same experience for the folks that are working out there. Because that's where they work. And, and teachers work in air-conditioned classrooms. We work in air-conditioned classrooms. I would tell you, many, he's gone now, so I can say this, many, many years ago, when Matthew Waley, who's one of the few schools that had no, you know, even after the big sort of renovation, they had to really fight for air conditioning. And of course, back then, it was only fifty thousand dollars. But air conditioning for that school. And I'll never forget, the mayor back then was Buddy Geddes, who's now deceased. One of the things he said, he was, he was the chair of city, he was city council. When he went to school, they didn't have air conditioning, so by golly, I don't see why they have to have air conditioning now. And that's pretty short-sighted. He lost that battle. But I, you know, I don't know, you don't have to say anything, but I just, I, I think, I don't know how much it is, compared to some of these enormous figures that we're looking at, it's not, it doesn't seem, you know, astronomical. But I do think, I think we ought to, you know, that should be something that should be considered sometime in the future. That's all. I, it wasn't in there, and so I.
Previously, we had the. Previously, we had the elementary school included in the fiscal year twenty-seven and twenty-eight plans. However, prior to this year, the pre-K numbers were not used in our projections, and they weren't taken into consideration. So based on the division's enrollment trends, a new elementary school is needed to alleviate overcrowding. And the estimated cost to begin the project in fiscal year twenty is thirty-eight million five hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars, which will save the division eighteen million, sorry, three hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars from the original cost that we had in latter years.
Does that include land and a place to put it?
No, sir.
So this slide actually shows a number of students enrolled in the elementary schools and school divisions of like sizes and demographics to that of WJCC schools. The average enrollment in the comparative school divisions was four hundred and forty-four students per school, while WJCC's is at five hundred and seventy-six. The next area to look at is that for the high schools. Above is the enrollment versus capacity chart again for the high schools.
Ms. Barnes, can I just ask a quick question before you move to...
Yes, ma'am.
About, so what size elementary school are you thinking? I'm sorry, this slide made me think of that.
For us...
The new one, yeah. What size?
It will change the ultimate capacity depending on the size that we choose. I think if we choose, if we look at an elementary school the size of Stonehouse or Matoka, obviously it will keep us within capacity longer. We haven't determined the size, the design or anything, we've just determined the need for space.
Okay. I was just curious if those dollar figures were attached to a certain size.
I think it's a generic price. Mr. Snipes, you may be able to speak to that. Same as Stonehouse, so it is potentially the cost for a seven fifty.
Thank you.
And we have determined if we were to build a, an elementary school at seven hundred and fifty student capacity, it would drop us to eighty-six point seventy-seven percent. So we'd still be...
Time to start planning again.
Correct.
So this next area is back to the high school, and our total enrollment for the high school is at ninety-six percent, as we mentioned in the enrollment presentation, and the division is projected to be at ninety-nine percent in fiscal year 2028.
So this begs the question, when I look at this chart, I just go, I know that we were split on this as a board, but redistricting could save some money here and alleviate some of the equity issues that we're facing in the school system.
But not relieve overall capacity at the high school level.
And kids don't come in nice, neat packets, and so when you're talking about being two percent of your overall enrollment, trying to find those two percent and put those in the right spots are kind of difficult unless you want to do it every year.
Having it stick.
Right.
Having that range, it goes from ninety-three percent in 2020, you know, all the way to ninety-nine percent in 2028, and fluctuating between there, ninety-three percent being the lowest.
I agree. I just, I still think we should be adding on. I just think we also need to take care of some of the other issues while we're doing it.
Yeah, I agree with that, that redistributing students should be part of the overall plan, expansion plan. It isn't simply to expand a building so that it can accommodate, you know, X number of more students, but in that process, I think that needs to be part of it. I think we've, I think we've dodged that, and I think it is a real concern. We have to deal with it, because we're going to keep hearing about it. We have to deal with that. I don't really see anything humorous about it, but...
I think the next couple of slides are really just presenting some very high-level research. Dr. Murphy presented this and used it in discussions with the Long Range Planning Committee, and it's just really for information of the board, I'm not going to read it to you, it just gives some background on the impact of school size on student achievement and other factors as well. So just leave it for a moment and give you a chance to read it, then we'll move to the next slide. Got additional questions? Dr. Murphy's here to answer them tonight. Okay, thank you. And this focuses more on cost, given another perspective on the size of the school.
So the county and city have as placeholders in their current capital improvement budgets for funding high school expansions in fiscal year 2021. So the original plan for Warhill High School included adequate space for eight classrooms. However, as special programs that are currently housed at Lafayette High School will move to Warhill, and the innovation program continues to grow, we're proposing the twelve-room expansion of Warhill High School to include the design portion in fiscal year twenty and construction in fiscal year twenty-one. And the overall total impact on the CIP is four million seven hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. So the second and third expansions are presented in the CIP to occur simultaneously. So first Jamestown High School expansion was included in the city and county's plan in fiscal year twenty-one, and as we're moving this project out one year to enable WJCC to house the current students during the Warhill expansion, the budgetary increase to the CIP is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars.
We're out of slides.
Yeah, just so you, our slide deck stopped the Warhill addition, just so you all know. That's why we're all looking confused.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I'm just looking here.
So go ahead.
Over there, sorry about that.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, we will make sure, I think we've got the full version uploaded.
As long as we can have that posted on Board Docs or somewhere.
So you've received several documents, and it summarizes the capital improvement plan budget. And the first document is a spreadsheet, and it's got a little bit of yellow and green on it, and that shows you the total budget and how it's allocated by school. And the other document that contains the proposal is grouped by project. So these next few slides actually just summarize the Word document, and it allows you to see how the allocated funding for the next five years is being used. So the first area is that for HVAC repairs or replacement, as well as the door replacement because that has an impact on heating and cooling. So this is sixteen million three hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and eleven dollars, or seventeen percent of the total five-year capital improvement plan. And this brings us to our roof replacements, refurbishments, and renovations, the three Rs., which is nine percent of the total five-year capital improvement plan budget, or eight million five hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And it's allocated to those repairs. And just to note, the Clara Bird Baker Elementary, that's actually for, just for the restroom So this slide shows just a multitude of projects, from the well-removal and baseball field refurbishment at Berkeley, to the walk-in refrigerator freezer replacements for our cafeterias, to generator replacements, electrical repairs, and division-wide projects to include parking lot expansions or parking lot repairs and sidewalk repairs, fire panels, brickwork, and playground equipment. So the total estimated cost over the next five years is three million three hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is three and a half percent of the total five-year capital improvement plan budget. And this slide shows the estimated cost for each of the expansions to the high schools, as well as that for the new elementary school. So the total cost for construction is sixty-six million three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars, and it's seventy percent of the total five-year And this slide just shows the estimated cost for each of the expansions to the high schools, as well as that for the new elementary school. In fiscal year twenty-one, this includes, I'm sorry, skip over, okay, sorry about that, fiscal year twenty, this includes the design at Warhill and the new elementary school design. And then in twenty-one, this includes the construction of Warhill High School, that expansion, the new elementary school construction, as well as the design for Jamestown High School and Lafayette High School. And fiscal year twenty-two contains the construction of Jamestown and Lafayette High School expansions, and that amounts to ninety-four million five hundred and eight thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. So what happens next, and I think Dr. Heron alluded to this at the beginning, we'll have a public hearing on November twenty-seventh, and we'll be seeking your approval on December the eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. And of course, everything will come back with the total school board adoption in May. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you for staying with me.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Barnes. Ms. Hummel has some questions?
Ms. Barnes, could we go back to the Warhills line?
Sure.
So does that include their auxiliary gym?
Yes, ma'am.
It does? Okay. I don't see that there.
Yeah, it's not included on the slide. It is included in the budget on this, the green and yellow.
That was very hard to read.
Each three.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make that for the viewing public.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Warhill expansion includes the oxygen.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's on the third page, and this will be posted as well, but it is on the last page of this green and yellow.
A lot to take care of.
I know it is, it's very, it'll be a little easier to read on the screen.
Just making sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have another question about Warhill that...
Go ahead.
That pertains to one of the speakers tonight, who is concerned about the impact of the extra classrooms on the cafeteria. But if we're looking at some of these classrooms being situated outside of what I would consider the high school population for either, I mean, would they be a stress on the...
Some of the programs in Lafayette now are separate from the regular schools, such as our learning lab and GED program, and the thought is when we add to Warhill first, those programs will move to Warhill. That is not a lot of students, so it's not twelve times twenty-five.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, too, for some of the Warhill people who might be hearing the comment tonight and then seeing this, that we, that those kind of issues are being considered and addressed.
And we'll certainly start to look at some of the potential impact on lunches and things like that as well.
Just to build on Ms. Hummels, before we go to Mrs. Young, could you just talk, just to add clarity, what your thoughts are on how that those twelve spaces, classrooms, would be used, and what programmatically, what you're thinking, if you could just share that with the public?
I think initial thinking that there'll be eight regular classrooms, so there is the potential for adding two hundred students to the school, and that will be the same with every addition, we would hope to add two hundred students to each school or the potential for it. Then the other two classrooms, or four classrooms, rather, would be learning lab and the GED programs that are currently housed in Lafayette High School in the nine-hundred building.
And as I recall, that, some of that was in close proximity to Thomas Nelson.
Correct. The reason we're looking at Warhill first is access to public transportation, which not every high school has access. We're right beside Thomas Nelson Community College for some of our partnership programs. There is a little bit more growth to the north of the county still at this moment in time, and the infrastructure is generally in place in Warhill for an expansion. It was built with the intention to expand at some point in time. And of course, the auxiliary gym that's been mentioned tonight is a driving factor as well, because we would want to do all of the construction at one time. So there's several reasons to push Warhill in front of the other two schools.
Mrs. Young, I'm sorry.
Okay, to piggyback on comments that were made by Dr. Beers, I don't see anywhere in the capital improvement plan changes that need to be made, like the operations building. And, I mean, one of the things that was, I've known about it for a couple of years, but I think it's brought on a little bit more impact to me since my air conditioning went out this summer, and, well, it wasn't even the summer, it was March, but it's Virginia. But the fact that we have employees coming to work early in the morning at really unreasonable hours, four in the morning, and to be done with their workday by noon because there's a lack of air conditioning in a facility is not reasonable. So my question is, where does that fit into the capital improvement plan?
It was never brought to the capital improvement committee, the recommendation, so that's why we didn't examine it at that time.
Okay, so...
However, if we had the direction of the whole board, we could certainly price what that would be.
Yes, that, to me, that's a big concern.
Same, it wasn't intentionally avoided or...
Okay, I'm glad to know that, at least, ma'am. Thank you.
Anything else? So I have several questions.
Sure.
I guess I'd like to start with what's not in the CIP, and I'm not comfortable with directing, the board directing staff on adding new things in the CIP. I prefer a process where it comes through the staff to us. That said, I absolutely agree with Mrs. Young and Dr. Beers about the working conditions at Ops and would like, you know, so I think the process is much improved, but with continuous improvement in mind, if you all could put that in the pipeline for, you know, for a future look, that would be good, because I've been there as well, and it's hot, and it's hot work. And so it just seems like if we can do some climate control work there or any other improvements, that would be good. And additionally, as you improve this process and look at long-range facilities, you know, we heard a little bit from the Warhill parent about going and possibly being Division Five A. I don't, I can't speak to VHSL rules or groupings, but we do have to think, I think, look hard at our athletic facilities. Dr. Beers has talked many times about our existing facilities and whether or not they are up to par for our existing sports, but then also what sports we may want to add. And so I think it's a look into the future, if you could add that into the pipeline, too, to make sure our students are able to achieve in the classroom, but also on, you know, competing, you know, in fine arts as well. And then if I could talk a little bit about elementary school, I think you've done a good job demonstrating the need for new elementary space, and I support a new elementary school. But I want to, just, could you talk a little bit about your thinking of why you're recommending a new school versus additions? I just think that's a question that should just, for viewing public, if you could just speak to that for just a second.
Well, I think part of it, first of all, the expansions, not all of the schools are expandable, and that's kind of, if you expand it, the ones that are, it would be a temporary fix. Whereas if you add a school, plus, that's the other thing, too, as the county grows, land is going to become even more scarce. So if there's available land now, that would probably be a good time to, you know, take advantage of that. And then you've also got another building that in the future, if you have to expand, you can, you know, plan for expansion there and the other buildings as well. So there's room for growth.
I think the Long Range Planning Committee did look at some of the options, and they brought forward the recommendation that the better option was to build a new school at elementary.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Yep. I question, we have three million, three and a half million for fiscal year twenty for the design of the elementary school, and I question how we can do that without having a site, so that you, to where you're going to put it, so...
Because the design is just a certain percentage of the total cost.
I understand that, but you have to usually design for the land that you have and how you're going to do that, so I'm not, I think that maybe... So, so I'm not, I think that maybe fiscal year 20 and 21 might be premature for doing, for doing a school design until our funding partners identify a site. But that's just my thoughts on that. As, as to the Ops discussion that's gone here, I think, I think as the division continues to grow, um, and continues to add buses, we might just take a holistic look of is it the right size? It's hard to air condition a building that wasn't designed to be air conditioned, but, um, you know, just kind of think about that whole holistic thing that maybe in a, a different location would be where that should be. Um, I also noticed in here for our high schools, we have several, uh, Lafayette, for instance, has a refurbishment. Um, I think War Hill had one too. I don't know, as we, as we look towards expanding those, expansion of those schools, maybe we would want to move those refurbishments into at the same time. That's interesting. Is it, is it, is it foggy outside? Oh. There we go. Kinda. I think we all wish we could do that about now.
Bother me?
Oh, okay. Should I continue? So, so in the past, I have, I have been a proponent of building a new high school and, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, um, the length of time it takes the community to decide to build a school and, and how long, how long till we get to that point? And, um... ...sort of lunch, I can stop in at two. Structure doesn't work. Don't have enough gym space, you know, that kind of thing. So, so I, I'm, you know, as you said, land is cheaper now than it's going to be in the future. Uh, one day, we're going to have to build a high school, but, um, at this point, um, I'm comfortable with supporting the expansions. But so long as the infrastructure like at War Hill, where they were talking about before, where they were having the lunch issues.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm comfortable. I think, I think that, you know, as this community moves from small to medium size, we gotta start looking at it, things with a different paradigm. And that would be one of the things we have to...
I, just a comment. I've, I don't think you can rely on research that's 20 years old. Really don't. I, I think too much has changed and I'm looking at 1996, 2001. Um, I, I, we must, if there's not any research, I know there's been research since then. Um, and I question, um, some of the conclusions of these earlier studies. Size does make a difference. Now, what is true? The best size is 15 to 1. And a lot of educators have said, um, to save money, uh, oh, that's okay, it, it doesn't, uh, it won't get make an average if you have 20 or 30 kids, because you're above the 15. I just think that, uh, I can't, I can't support the conclusions drawn from those old studies that, um, size does make a difference.
And...
And there are, there are, there have been later studies that...
And jumping off from, jumping off from that too, is what is high school going to look like 20 years from now? You know, so is it going to be, you know, where, where kids go to school from 7 to 2:30? Or are you going to have some going from 7 to 2 and then others going from 10 to 6? And so, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different paradigms that may be in play come 10, 20 years down that would keep you from having to build a, a bigger school. But, but, you know, I, I support it not because it's cheaper, not because it's simpler, but because it provides a better opportunity for our kids.
Any other questions? So, we'll pick up the conversation then, uh, at this, at our next meeting and then, um, so hopefully if you all have any questions between now and then, you'll convey them so that, that we can have that discussion, have those questions answered then. And then we'll be prepared to take action at the December meeting. Uh, and also, of course, we're going to hear from the public at the public hearing at the next meeting as well. Yes, I hope. Ms. Cox will work on that for us, right? Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll move to 7.0 for fiscal year 2019, 2020 compensation update. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Baker, uh, Department of Human Resources is going to bring us some information on compensation and options and where we are in the field right now with regard to compensation. And this is just some very preliminary information to start to think about as we move into budget planning season and to inform our later discussion in January. It's one of many conversations we'll have, uh, really to get us thinking and to start generating questions from, from you and what kind of information you'd like to know. Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. As we prepare to enter the budget season, we wanted to give you some information to consider. We'd like to put into context where we are regarding teacher salaries and where we hope to go and why. As we consider our new strategic plan, we do have a goal and a strategy to be a leader in the region regarding employee salaries. Last year at this time, we presented a similar chart here that we were showing that we were eight out of nine in entry-level bachelor salaries. This slide also shows how we compare in different milestone years. We tend to do better at the top of the scale, especially when you consider longevity pay. Uh, we currently have 72 teachers that receive the 20-year milestone, which is $3,000, $3,390. And we have 45 teachers who receive the 25-year milestone of $7,030. So, uh, we have 117 teachers who receive longevity pay. We currently have 70 teachers who have over 20 years' experience who do not receive longevity pay. Longevity pay began here in Williamsburg, James City County in the mid-1980s and ended around the year 2011. On this slide, we show how we rank on the master's scale at the beginning, uh, scale at a different, and also a different milestone year. And this is significant because the majority of the teachers that we hire have at least a master's degree. Uh, this year, the teachers we hired that had zero years of experience to us, 10 had a bachelor's and 22 had a master's degree. This also bears out over the last five years with 75 teachers having a bachelor's degree and 130 having a master's that, that came to us with zero, no years of experience. Again, why is this important? Uh, over the last few years, it's been, we've been very fortunate to be fully staffed or nearly fully staffed, but a dilemma is coming. Less and less potential teachers are completing teacher preparation programs across the nation. It's down 35 to 40%, and we see this when we're out recruiting on college campuses. Also, we are, all the school divisions are competing for a scarce resource. This is just not, uh, and it's just not the folks that are going into teaching, less teachers are staying in teaching. Uh, the trend is about 30% of teachers are leaving the profession after five years. Uh, our first-year teacher retention rates are approximately 90% and our overall teacher retention rate's approximately 84%. So, we need to get the teachers here to Williamsburg, James City County Public Schools and we need, and we need to keep them. Last year, we increased our bachelor's entry-level salary from $41,500 to $43,000, which was a 3.6% increase, uh, and while most of our other employees received an average of a 3% increase. This was very hard work, a lot of challenging decisions had to be made to, to do that. But even with all that effort, uh, we moved from eight out of nine to seven out of nine. And that's barely, we're $58 ahead of York County schools. So, on this slide, we wanted to give you some different scenarios. Uh, we wanted to let you know what it would take, uh, to make gains in our bachelor's entry-level salary. So, if, if we wanted to be 1% higher than our competition, so here's an example of our competition gives a 2% increase and we give a 3% increase. Where's that going to take us in the bachelor's, bachelor's entry level over the next few years? Uh, if we did that for the next few years, by the year 2023, 2024, we would be fourth. That would be if we were always 1% ahead of our competition. The next row is what if we were 1 and 1/2% ahead of our competition? So, an example would be our competition gives a 2% increase and we're giving a 3.5% increase every year for the next few years. Um, and by the year 2023, 2024, we would be second. Uh, and again, this is going to take a huge effort. Uh, and please know that for every 1% increase that we give all employees is approximately equals a million dollars. The next scenario in this row is what if we give 2% more than the competition? So, the example here is we give 4% and the competition gives 2%. So, by the year 2023, 2024, just for bachelor's entry-level salary, we would be second. The last scenario, this last row here is, um, another idea is to give a flat $2,000 increase for entry level every year. And then the remaining staff could potentially see an increase, whatever, uh, the salary increase could be an average of 2%, 2 and 1/2, 3, 4%. Uh, but this last scenario, giving a flat 2%, uh, a flat $2,000 increase every year would give us greater flexibility to increase, uh, other salaries and achieve our goal of entry-level salary, uh, uh, being the leader, uh, and also potentially give the remaining staff a consistent raise. So, if we did this $2,000 increase for entry level every year, uh, that would put us number one by the year 2023 if everybody else just gave a 2% increase.
So, what does that do for step two?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, it would potentially, uh, you know, we're not trying to just build in compression like we've had in the past. We would, this last scenario would give you more flexibility, uh, to, to build the steps in and the, and the percentages versus the other scenarios. If you gave 4%, if you gave 4% exponentially down the whole scale, um, it would be very challenging to do.
And does the $2,000 increase for entry level also kind of, um, it's concentrating your, your money at, at getting the teachers versus sometimes when you're doing the 4% increase, you're, you're going across the board with staff and administrators and, and... Right?
Yeah, you're trying to get, I mean, we, we traditionally give a, a, the salary...
Give it to everybody.
Everybody. This would give you the chance to, like, some school divisions, as we compare, and I'll show you in a slide later, they, they really front-load their salary schedule. And we're not quite saying that. I think, and the one I think of is Surrey and they're way out ahead. And they've, they've consciously front-loaded their scale.
Okay, because my next question was going to be Surrey. So, you're going to talk about that?
Pure economics at work.
I'm like, Surrey?
Pure economics. Supply and demand.
Well, see, I think part of that also is it's much harder for them to get teachers.
Economics.
Correct.
I, here's, and this is related to this. I, I forget where the, I read an article that compared starting salaries of, of college students who, you know, graduated BA, BS in some other kinds of professions. And the minimum starting salary with a lot of those folks was $50,000. What would it cost us just to start off and say to, you know, a prospective, um, new teacher, wish that we, you start off at 50 grand? How much would that cost us?
Well, these scenarios, I mean, this bottom row here, giving a $2,000 increase for bachelor's entry level every year for the next few years, and the year 2023, 2024, that would put our starting teacher salary on the bachelor's level at $54,400.
See, I, I think, I think that, that has a psychological benefit.
Whereas when you cross the threshold, I know...
Say, you know, it's like you, you're, you know, you're going to start off at 50 grand. Um, that has a, I, I think that has a, um, there's a positive, it, you know, it's, I think it makes, it'll make somebody stop and think about that.
Particularly when you're higher than anybody else on the peninsula.
Well, no, I, I just, I, I think we're going to have to.
Andrew in Williamsburg rather than Surrey.
We're going to have to do something. Because one of the, one of the things that, um, we heard from the superintendent, state superintendent, was that the, um, very first day of school, there were 1,000 teaching vacancies all across the state. 1,000 teaching. So, um, something dramatic has to be done to, to try to turn it.
That's what, like we said, the, you know, 30 to 40% of, uh, teacher applicants are, are folks are less going into teaching than there was even years ago.
True, I know that.
And so, they have, they have options.
That's why a, a lot of teacher ed programs have gone to online programs because they don't have enough bodies coming through the door, so they're...
We're all fighting for those resources.
And a lot of them had the five-year program where you come out with a master's at the end.
Well, yeah, but those are, all of them are going to down everywhere.
Speaking of the masters, uh, so in the last few years...
Let's segue for you.
We've, thank you. Uh, we've shown a lot of data regarding our entry level for, for the bachelor's degree. For the master's degree entry level, we're actually nine out of nine in the same competition.
And so, Tim, what were your numbers there? You said the, the sort of, from what we hire per year, 25 for...
Yeah, the, uh...
25 and 75, is that what it was?
For this past school year, for folks that came to us with, with no other teaching experience, this was their first year in teaching. This school year, we had 10 teachers that had a bachelor's and 22 that had a master's. And then over the last five, I looked at data for the last five years, folks that we hired that had no other teaching experience when they came to us, um, we had 75 with a bachelor's and 130 with a master's.
So, that's over the past five years?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Those five-year programs...
So, so the next, so if we hire about 110, 120 teachers a year, what's our average experience level of the, of the teacher that we hire?
Um, I had to double check and get that for you.
That's a great question for me to throw out to you in the middle of nowhere, isn't it?
Like I said, this year, 30 of them, 30 out of the 120 had zero teaching, zeros of teaching experience.
So, 25% had, had no experience. And so, the other 75%...
Were veterans of other...
Right, so we had, so, you know, when we look at Williamsburg, are we going to get the zeros or are we going to get the seven to on? So, I mean, it's just something to think about.
I think the number of new teachers has gone down everywhere. So, now we're not just competing for new teachers, we're competing for experienced teachers. So, of 2/3, and that's more than I think than normal for us, we're experienced teachers from other systems this year. So, we're still fully staffed within almost the beginning of school, but we're pulling some new, but more are coming from other systems, which is incredible.
Right, so, so the question is should we put, be putting a lot of emphasis on the second half of our pay scale versus the first half of our pay scale? You know, not, not...
Yeah, but there's a lot, less and less folks are getting into it and more folks are going to retire and there's not going to be that many veteran...
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, it's pure economics, right? So, so we as a, as a, as a society have to value our teachers to a greater extent to encourage high school kids to consider that as a profession, to, you know, it's, you know, it's economic.
Competing against folks who want to get into engineering or get into, into other, right? NASA folks we saw earlier. So, this slide again... So, this slide again just shows you, we're currently nine out of nine because, and so this is important for us. And so, again, the similar scenarios with master's entry level, in a similar way to the bachelor's, this slide shows what it would take to gain on a master's entry level. So, if we were one percent higher than our competition, again, the example of, we give three percent and they, everybody else gives two percent, by the year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, we would be sixth. Then the next row, the example is, if we're one and a half percent higher than our competition, we give three and a half percent, they give two percent, by the year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, we would be third. And this, again, has taken a huge effort, a lot of hard work, and again, a one percent increase for all employees equates to be about a million dollars. Yes, ma'am?
So, last year, when we, and, you know, we had the big study and it talked about and we made our decision, what did the other school systems do? Were they at the two percent or were they at the three percent?
Some were, it was a mix.
Because this assumption that all the other schools are going to stay at two percent, who, I mean-
I agree with you a hundred percent. I mean, this was just to kind of give us a talking point of, you know, are we, how do we going to stay ahead of them? And even if, you know, does it take us being at even three percent, three and a half, four percent?
So, last year, it-
There was a variety across the peninsula. Some were two percent, some were three, Gloucester was five percent. So, because they were at the bottom and trying to move up in the region and be competitive as well. So, it really was across the board, but we did well last year compared to most systems. Most were two. But everybody's looking at this right now because of the shortage of teachers.
And if you look at our traditional salary schedule, you know, we encourage the masters and the longevity, right? So, we top you out, if you have a bachelor's and that's all, you get topped out at a certain, the scale for the masters continues. We encourage the National Board Certified, they get money. We encourage, you know, back when they had the longevity pay, once you got the number, you got, you got a little hit there. So, we, so we really have, have historically loaded the backend of our, of our salary schedule to encourage those guys to, those kids, those guys to come from other school systems here instead of, you know, because we always have had a tough market for the twenty-two to twenty-seven-year-old, right?
But you need them both.
But you do need them both, right? You do need them both.
Are the five, are the masters, is it William &amp; Mary, JMU? What are the other big programs in Virginia that are producing the-
George Mason.
George Mason?
Longwood.
Okay. Hampton, Hampton University?
I think JMU has the biggest education.
Most of them have done away with their undergraduate programs.
Yeah, most of them, they're all, they've all-
They've gone to five-year.
Okay.
I think the message behind this is, we have to stay ahead of the other systems to stay competitive in the region, no matter what we do, whether it's beginning of the scale or end of the scale or whatever.
Get competitive.
Or to be competitive, because we're not right now.
And, and that is just teachers across the board. When you start to get to minority teachers and that, you know, where does a young black male teacher want to go? Do they want to go to Richmond or Virginia Beach or they want to come to Williamsburg? I mean, it's, it's, it's tough to get those younger teachers to be competitive in that.
The other thing about younger teachers, where are they going to live?
Yeah, right.
You know, that they can afford.
And where are they going to go out at night?
Yeah.
And where are they, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole-
And I know, gosh, Tim, I know you do everything that anybody possibly could do to, to try to draw more, you know, minority teachers in here. And part of it is, it's not, it's not everything that we're doing. It's also that individual making decisions about, you know, I want to be in a different kind of environment or whatever it might be, or housing's cheaper.
Well, a lot of it too is that, that teacher wants to have an impact on, like an African-American teacher wants to have an impact on African-Americans, right? So, they go to the Richmonds and the Virginia Beaches where there's a higher percentage and hope to have a bigger impact. I think, I think that's a little bit of a play in it, but, so, I mean, it's, you know, we count victories in single digits when we're, when we're there and it's, we're a tough player in that.
I agree. I'm sorry.
No, no.
On this slide, the top row again is just talking about if we had a two percent increase on the master's, master's entry level, by the year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, we would be second. And then kind of the question, I guess, Dr. Beers, you had said, what would that look like in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four? If we had a four percent increase, that entry level salary for us would actually be up to fifty-six thousand dollars. The last row here is, if all the other school divisions give two percent and we give two thousand dollars every year for entry level, and then we have some flexibility to give a different percentage for the rest of the scale and then flesh it out, we would actually be number two by the year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. But then we put our, getting any entry level salary there with this scenario at fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars, we'd still be number two if Suri just gave two percent every year. And again, this just shows you the amount of work and the effort that it, that it takes to go up in these rankings. And to kind of reemphasize some of the points that y'all have made already is, you know, there is a teacher shortage, we're facing more competition for fewer candidates. We want to draw teachers into the profession. They have choices, especially high-quality candidates, and they have plenty of other options. And then thinking about the design of our scale, we want to get our teachers a higher salary sooner. And so, if we can put more money in there, we can do that. We just wanted to give you some thoughts as we go into the budget season.
You know, I just, I'm just going to say it one more time. I think we're going to, we'll reach a point where we have to do, we have to do something. But I just think something that's a little dramatic, a little, that's going to get press and hitting that threshold does have, it has, it can have a positive impact on, on young people, who, you know, might be thinking about it or maybe hadn't thought about it. But it's like, geez, I'd be starting off at, you know, you know, the guys that are going over to wherever, you know, wherever they might be having the other job. And doesn't necessarily mean it's going to cost a lot initially because you might only hire fifty new teachers or twenty-five, brand-new at the starting level. But I just, I'm, I just support that.
Are you done, Dr., are you good? You're done? Okay, Mrs. Young, sorry.
I had asked for also us to talk about the compensation for our staff. Do you know if that is being responded to at some point? It was an SBQ that I had asked for about compression for our staff employees.
For other groups of employees, I think Mr. Baker and the staff are still researching and looking into the data from the compensation study.
Okay, thank you. I think that's going to play into our budget decisions also.
Are you going to come up with charts that are similar to this for staff? If you did this, if you did that?
Correct, I think as we go into the budget season.
Anything else?
I just want to thank you for this and I think it's really important. We've got support from the localities last year, which, you know, I'm grateful for to provide raises, but we need to, we need to be clear about what our plans are so that they, they can consider that, not just year-to-year, but as they project out. And, you know, and use the data that you're showing to justify it. But, you know, two, two other aspects of this that, that I think about as I look at these numbers and I support, you know, an aggressive plan to pay our teachers well, but two other things I think about. One, Dr. Beers mentioned earlier, which is this idea of, you know, fifteen to one. I know we're not there and we likely never will be, but I mean, I think it's, it's not just compensation, it's the experience in the classroom. And I'd like to know what class size is and how we compare to other divisions too because, you know, we may be paying not so well, but, but there's that other, you know, tangible piece of how, what that classroom experience is and the support that they get in, in the classroom and how many students they're working with. And similar to that, top of mind for me, as we have gone with a similar, you know, same-sized student population from three middle schools to four middle schools, more teachers at that level became itinerant because of that change. And so, I'm curious if there's a trend there for us in our division, in terms of teachers that are, whether it's special ed or at the upper levels, are we asking more and more teachers to be itinerant? And if so, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that and I'm not expecting you to now, but if that's the case, what experience are we giving to teachers? And do we need to, in addition to pay them more, hire more so fewer have to be itinerant and have a more school-based experience? So, that's, those are the things that I'm thinking about.
Good question.
Anything else?
If you have any additional questions in this area or information that you really would like to have as part of a budget retreat to really talk about this at more length and help us come forward with a recommendation, please, please send it our way. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
All right, then that brings us to policies. The first is revised, eight-point-zero-one revised policy EBB threat assessment teams. I don't know whether that's Uma Zonby or Dr. Heron or Pouswa.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. Policy EBB is our threat assessment team policy. It was last revised in two thousand and sixteen. We, you'll see the changes are fairly minor. Primarily, the, the policy now addresses all individuals where previously it only addressed our process for looking at student threats. So, now it can be any individual that might pose a threat.
Sorry, my computer, yes, sorry, malfunction. Anyone have any questions about EBB? And if we can move on to eight-point-zero-two JHF, JHFA, student safety supervision of students?
Also, student services. Yes, this policy, there is no matching VSBA policy. It was first created in nineteen-seventy-four. Since then, obviously, a lot of additional policies have been added to specific, much more specifically address student safety. EBB is just one example of that, threat assessment teams. So, we feel like this is adequately addressed through other established policies. So, we are recommending that it be retired.
Questions? Okay, we'll move to JOA, retire policy JOA, access to student records.
Again, this was a policy, it was last revised many years ago and it was specific to child custody. That is covered as far as parents' educational rights through FERPA. There is no matching VSBA policy, so we're also recommending that this be retired.
Questions? Okay, and our last one, policy JEA, revised policy JEA, school attendance.
Yes, we're recommending we make the revisions that you see in order to align with some slight changes in state code and to align with the VSBA policy. Predominantly, it just more clearly identifies some of the requirements for students that are in programs that have an equivalent, high school equivalency. And it very clearly identifies that if they choose to not continue in a program that they've entered and they're still with under compulsory attendance, that they will be expected to return back to the traditional high school program.
Yeah, thank you, sorry, we're having board doc issues, the document keeps disappearing.
So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
As I recall, because I can't pull it up, as I recall, this policy, this policy seemed to be a lot of recitation of state code.
It is.
So, we, should we just have the code versus the policy?
We could, and typically that's what we do. This tends to be a very foundational policy for what parents need to know regarding school attendance.
So, the audience really is the parent.
Often with this one.
So, so when state code changes, we'll change the policy? Because we can't, obviously, our state code govern over our policy, right?
What Dr. Heron just instituted, when the code changes, running those through in batches every July, right? Is that when they-
Yes, when there's major changes, they tend to come to us by group and then we bring all of those in larger groups to the board.
So, that should be automatic from now on, Jim? Mr. Kelly?
Okay, I mean, it's just, it's just, okay, just as a recitation of the code that it's somewhere else, but that's okay.
You're okay with it? Any other questions? Thank you. So, these will all go to the consent agenda at our meeting next, later this month. Okay, that brings us to personnel action. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented this evening.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. That brings us to nine-point-zero-two appointments to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that Beth Hall, Kelly Lindberg, and Adrian Carter be appointed to the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, hearing none, Ms. Sersi, will you call the roll?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. So, because I was having trouble with my board docs, the motion did not include a term ending. Is that problematic?
It is on the attached sheet that shows the appointment and the term.
Okay, so we're good. Okay, thank you, sorry, board docs is just really not behaving today, so.
It's not a lifetime appointment.
It's not a lifetime appointment. Sorry, that was funny. All right, that brings us to board member comments. Ms. Taylor, do you have anything to share with us?
Not to prolong our meeting any further, but just to encourage the community to come out to our CIP hearing on November twenty-seventh and to continue to contact us with any comments or concerns they may have. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Aman.
Mrs. Young.
I just wanted to compliment the counseling staff for the career and college night that was held at Warhale High School mid-October. There were professionals there from many, many different universities, as well as we had our partners from our local, from WJCC, from, yeah, from WJCC police, and I have to make sure I separate these areas. And firemen were there, along with all of our military components were there as well. The Newport News Ship Building was there, as well as representatives from the apprentice school. And along with, it was the first time, I didn't realize that there, that KOA provided opportunities for young people to gain business experience and to get degrees in business. That's pretty lucrative business for campsites. There were representatives from the surveying and landscaping, hotels, all looking for young people who need to go into those areas. So, there's, the opportunities are really out there and I was, it was a wonderful evening and I want to compliment, again, the counseling department for pulling that off and doing such a great job.
Thank you. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Mrs. Young and I had a fabulous tour of the operations facility and I have, I must say that it was, they really have, they're, they're using state-of-the-art technology to keep track of every single school bus and they've got some new stuff coming online. They can pinpoint them. They're an amazing group of people that work over there and I was really, for some, I'd been over there and I was very much impressed. Had a, we had, I had a really good tour of James Blair from the principal over there and enjoyed that visit. Went down to James River. Jennifer Smith, who's the school counselor down there, had a-
down there, had a committee meeting talking about the counseling program that they have down there and the sorts of things that they do. And I was very much impressed with that. And then we had a tour of Blatton. I had never been in Blatton Elementary School. Dr. Stam took us around, and I very much enjoyed going into one of the eight bright beginnings classrooms, getting on my hands and knees, and learning that this one little, one little guy really liked the orange, what do you call those things? What is, I'm trying to think what that cereal was. Anyway, the orange pieces rather than the green. And I asked him why, and he said simply, there are more of them. So that was a wonderful tour, and a really, really great school. So, anyway.
If you haven't been to Ops on the first day of school, you haven't been to Ops.
I know. Fruit loops. There were, sorry, there were fruit loops. And the little girl across from him said, I like all of them. And another guy, another little guy was looking for blue ones, and he couldn't find them. But anyway.
I had a great, well, November is Take Your Legislator to Work Month. So I took Senator Monty Mason and his wife Pam over to James Blair, and Principal Harris gave us a nice tour of the facility. And it was really great to see some of the technology in place, including the Makerspace lab that they have going over there, and the 3D printer. They're going to be creating a green wall so they can do the virtual reality. So there's a lot of really great innovative activity going on at Blair. And then I also was told that it's not a STEM program, it's STEAM. So we cannot forget the A in STEM.
We cannot.
We cannot. So we have to start, like, thinking STEAM rather than STEM. Anyway, it was a great, it was a great trip. And then I'll be visiting Stonehouse on Monday with you, right?
Yes.
Yes. So I'm going to go out to Stonehouse. And I wanted to congratulate them for the Purple Heart Award. Wasn't that Stone?
No, Blatton.
Oh, Blatton. I want to congratulate Blatton.
They got the blue ribbon.
Blatton, yeah.
Oh, there's too many awards going on. But in any event, because of Veterans Day, I'm sure across the school system, all of the schools were doing wonderful appreciation events for our veterans. And one of my husband's coworkers went to Stonehouse and was just raving about Stonehouse's Veterans Day. So it doesn't go unnoticed when the school system does those kinds of appreciation activities. And I know it's a lot of work to put them on, but a lot of goodwill comes from it.
Thank you. Ms. Onby?
Yes. Like Ms. Hummel, I was able to take Delegate Pogi to Hornsby Middle School to tour that building. And on October 18th and on November 2nd, took Delegate Mullin and Supervisor Jim Eisenhour to Berkeley Middle School. So not only did we get to tour the buildings and chat with administrators, we were able to talk about SOLs and MAPS testings, AEP CTE courses at the middle school level, the impact of redistricting, class size, MTSS, ESL, sped, and we talked about proposed legislation. And so Delegate Pogi was very excited about moving the primary down a week in January. Was very proud of our, I mean, sorry, in June. Yes, the third week in June, so that she would champion that. But was proud of both of our middle schools and got to see Berkeley's Makerspace as well, which was growing and expanding. On October 22nd, had an opportunity to attend Blair's first-ever student SCA candidate presentation. So those brave students had to stand up in front of the entire school in the auditorium, auditoria, and share their candidate speeches. On October 23rd, had an opportunity to attend Jamestown High School's PTSA kickball game, because they are, they rewarded the PTSA excellency.
Award of Excellence.
Yeah. And so they're one of just a handful, I think, three.
Too many awards.
Yeah, too many awards. That was, that was cool to see parents and students and teachers participate in a kickball. On November 5th, attended the very first STEAM night at Blair. So parents and students had an opportunity to participate in a range of hands-on STEAM activities, which was pretty cool. And then on November 8th, sat with Dr. Heron, Dr. Shandor from York County, and Principal Stut on the lead education panel, and had an opportunity to share information about our school system with future community leaders. So that was exciting. And then I just wanted to circle back around to the drum major at Lafayette, Hallie Rubenstein. The fact that she's going to march in the Macy's Day Parade, Macy's Day Parade, I think is just a testament to how great and phenomenal our band program is across the division. And then wanted to speak to our speakers tonight who talked about equity. And I think it's very clear with our strategic plan, the emphasis on equity and the fact that we are transparent and we're not hiding the fact that we definitely have those opportunity gaps. And I'm looking forward to strategies to address that. That's my list for tonight.
Were there any injuries in the kickball game?
There were no injuries. It looked like, it was hot. It was very hot that day.
That's great. Well, I just wanted to thank the members of the school board who were able to volunteer to participate in Take Your Legislator to Work, to school. That's very important, and I'm glad that you took the time to show them our wonderful places. So, okay, we're nearing the end here. Upcoming events, VSBA Annual Convention is the end of this week, November 14th through 16th at the Williamsburg Lodge. On the 14th, the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee will take place at 3:30 in Room 108, School Board Central Office here at James Blair. The policy committee meets on the 28th of November at 8:00 a.m. in Room 3 here in the annex. The student advisory committee meets also on the 28th at 3:30 p.m. at the Media Center at Lafayette High School. And then finally, the school liaison committee meets on the 29th of November at 7:30 a.m. in Room 309 in the annex. Upcoming meetings, we have our closed session, closed session starting on the, at 6:00 p.m. on November 27th at the Stryker Center. Is that correct? Okay, we're at the Stryker Center. Followed by a public hearing at 6:30. And that's, of course, about the CIP. And then followed by a regular meeting, right? Regular meeting, Janet?
It's actually a work session and action items.
Okay, it is a work session and action items, followed immediately after the closed session, after the public hearing. And then, so then, and then on the 11th of December, we have our only meeting in December. It starts with a closed session at 6:00 here in the annex, followed by work session and action items at 6:30 here in Room 300. And then I'd like to set the agenda for the next regular meeting, which is actually not a regular meeting, but a work session and action item. We will hear from the New Horizons new CEO, Superintendent, what do we call him?
Executive Director.
Executive Director, thank you. And then we also hear from School Spotlight, J.B. Blatton, about their new award and the program that got them the new award. We'll have the public hearing on the CIP, and followed by discussion. And then talk about Cooley Field and the capacity resolutions we discussed today. And then, of course, our regular consent agenda. And if there's nothing else, adjourned.